All right, now then, all the council members are present. I call to order the August 20th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, the West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency, and Finance Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place, and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous people still connected to this land on which we gather. The council met in closed session this evening. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any items to report? All right, you need to, we need to get your mic on. We would like to invite our guests to join council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by Mr. Clay Merrill. Please come to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is noted on our agenda, city councils prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under Item 1 for public comment. But it provides an important opportunity for a public forum. The public is given an opportunity at this time to address city council issues not listed on the agenda. And we do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or speak on any other items this evening, please fill out a request to speak card and turn it into the clerk. And we asked, and once, once the, we asked to, the request to speak cards be brought up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular agenda item that is taken up today. Once the staff report has been read, and we open the item up for public comment, the clerk will announce your name for you to walk to the podium to speak. Now, in front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard, and we ask that all comments be limited to the specified number of minutes. I will add that we have a special meeting, and there are two number ones, I think, on the consent calendar. So if you can please specify which item, if you wanted to speak on either one, there are two agendas. One is a special meeting, and one is a regular meeting, just to make sure that you can distinguish that if you have any request to speak on any one of those two. But they will both be brought up under the consent calendar. Also, in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart, which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. And we also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause, or boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we may maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct posted and not speak in loud, threatening, or offensive, abusive, or disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Now, this brings us to Item 1, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. And each person has three minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Clay Merrill.
Mr. Merrill.
Good evening, Mayor Guerrero and fellow city council members. Great to be with you. Clay Merrill, your local government affairs representative for Pacific Gas and Electric Company. Just want to make you aware of two events that are coming up. One is a coffee connect on Wednesday, August 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. This is going to be at Lenisa's Cafe on Jefferson Boulevard. We are hosting this event for our customers and your constituents. So members of our customer team will be there to answer questions and connect more with our customers in West Sacramento. I've sent a digital flyer to each of you, and if you can help promote that event for us, we'd appreciate that. Also, we have solidified a date of Monday, September 29th, for another customer event at the community room in the West Sacramento Recreational Center. Times are still being figured out, but we will be there for the day, answering questions related to customer bills. And we'll have members of our team there to help review their accounts and assist with questions and concerns related to their energy bills. So as we have those details more fleshed out, I will make you aware of that so that you can also help us promote that. So more information to come, but we appreciate your support and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill. And I encourage that staff work with Mr. Merrill on the time to be in the evening for that event.
Guy Stevenson.
Madam Mayor, city council members, I took a ride the other day, and you know, I brought this up about the food vendors. So this is what I'm gonna do. If something is not done with these people, because some of them not only have one cart, but they have several, so you know what that means? That means they make probably $6,000 to $7,000. And they're not regulated by the health department, they're not regulated by any city where you gotta have a license to do business, and these people are making money. Now, I know you're probably thinking, oh, it's a racial thing. It has really nothing to do with it. Don't matter what race you are, if you're doing business illegally, then come to the city and get a permit, get a license, have the health department check your food out before somebody gets food poisoning. So that's that. The other thing that I was gonna say is this little wonderful service that you people over, have over here called VIA. I know that they just did a changing of the guards, whatever you wanna call it, the city manager for this area, I know that she has left, and they got a new person in there that absolutely knows nothing about the business. And then the guy that's in charge of Buggy, they got rid of him, too. And, you know, you people sink all this money in there, but you wanna raise, you wanna raise the fares to these senior citizens, these disabled people? You got Measure O, you, how much money did you guys give those people? $10 million bucks in three years? And their service is bad, bad. And I had a long conversation with the CHP just the other day about their aggressive driving because they wanna get to the calls as fast as they can. They don't, they got people that are signing up, they got people that don't show up because they, you know what they say? Oh, we're independent contractors, so we can do what we want. So if that's the way you people wanna do business, and I really don't understand why you're doing business with a company like that that's in the East Coast, in New York. So is Buggy, they're in the East Coast, which is a big sewage plant back there. And I mean, it's, it is. And I don't understand why you people wanna raise the price. It's ridiculous to me. It makes absolutely no sense, because you got Measure O money, use Measure O money, keep it like it is, or you're gonna lose a lot of riders. Nobody's gonna pay $28 to ride in that thing. I'm surprised anybody's paying at all.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
Michael Root.
I'm a, just a concerned citizen. I wanted to speak, number one, you guys have a thing on the agenda about the Capitol projects. I live in the state streets, and you guys are wanting to put another 10% on top of the 10% you've already approved. I just retired from, from the industry. You guys need to stop and have some more inspections on the project over there. The project is not, it's, it's run very incompetent. They, they are, they're terrible. The streets, the streets are vibrating, they're, they're not supposed to be out there in the morning, they, they ran three, they ran, yes.
If this is related to that agenda item, this process, public comment, is for items not on the agenda.
Oh, this part is?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I have a list of, for that, too.
Do you want to submit a request to speak?
I put it on both, I checked both on my card.
We'll, we'll need to wait. Do you have anything else to add before?
I have some, I have a list of other things that are on.
Please, that'll be great, thank you.
The, well, number one, there's a, we have spots over in the state streets and on park for the old scooters that were the rentals. Why can't we get rid of that? Why can't we get rid of that? Nobody uses them, the rental scooters are not around, they're taking up spots, people are hitting them and running over the cones. That needs to go away. We used to have code enforcement that came through the neighborhood and stopped people with trailers that are sticking out on the sidewalks. I get tired of having to call code enforcement, because I don't wanna be the guy running around ratting. We used to have people that actually went around and saw that kinda stuff. There was a pile of brush that somebody threw in the street that sat across the street until I called. It sat there for four weeks, okay? Not, we don't have it. When I call code enforcement, well, we don't have the people. Well, you gotta get the people. We have, on Park Boulevard, we have a horrible problem with speed. I've been passed in the center lane, I've been passed in the bicycle lane, and we need to get some more enforcement out there. It's not happening. That's why the guy got killed at 16th and Park, okay? Because people fly down that street, okay? One, another safety issue, the off-ramp coming off at Jefferson is terrible. We gotta get those homeless people off of there from begging, because people come down the off-ramp and think they're a do-gooder, and they wanna stop and give the guy $10 at a green light, when there's semis and everything else coming down off the freeway. It's a horrible, horrible safety issue, okay? Like I say, code enforcement and most of the stuff is, like, we need to go back to the way that it used to be, you know? Police response, you know, maybe, I think we need to hire some more police, whatever we need to do.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Matt Weaver.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Pleasure to be here today. I'm in gym attire, so forgive me for not wearing city council attire. Coming, few things. First of all, watched the last couple of meetings, and there's plenty of good stuff going on in the city. I don't think most people take time on a Wednesday, hot summer evening to talk about good stuff, but kudos to the city on some great news with parks and what I'm seeing on the streets with more patrolling. I mean, it's very noticeable already, so that's very cool to know that that's actually work in progress. But I wanna talk about a couple of things. Oh, and I also wanna just give credit to the council on your accessibility and responsiveness. I've had, for lack of a better word, beef with some of the decisions, some of the things I read and see, and I think I can get a better response from this council than I can most large and small companies, and even departments within the city. So, kudos to you all on that. Now, to my beefs. Let's talk about that for a second. Maps, maps are a big discussion. I think they have been since Christopher Columbus discovered America and put a new name on the map. Then we just keep going west and put new names on maps. And I think you guys have, like, closed sessions about lawsuits about maps and districts. And I think the state of Texas wants to do something with maps, and the state of California wants to do something with maps. Who's making the damn maps? Who's in charge of the maps? Do governments always do good things with maps? Or do governments manipulate property values, school districts, quality of life for people quietly? Most of the time, not publicly, with manipulating maps. Nobody ever wants to take credit for it and say, I made that map. A great example is your North and South overlay maps for the retail cannabis priority that the city council said a couple of years ago. Said, here in this council chamber, there shall be no unreasonable restrictions on the placement of these, as long as it's a generally available commercial. Suddenly, there's maps. There's maps that zone out an entire city block that say, you can't do this here. And then I turn around and watch my city council, in the same representation of the district where I run a business, give a drive-and-go cognac stop on Jefferson and 15th. So, you can't do retail cannabis on 15th Street and Jefferson, but you can drive up and get a full tank of unleaded and a bottle of cognac. Who's responsible for these maps? I am going to publicly protest and make sure the retail cannabis movement in the city of West Sacramento goes nowhere until those maps are visited. So, if you plan on awarding that, or if you have, I'm gonna be here on record saying I'm gonna take legal action against that award because of the maps.
Latino Information and Resource Center.
Maria, if you can provide your name, with your organization, please.
Graduated to Hearn-Aids.
Oh, yeah. Puedes dar tu nombre?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Good evening, council members and staff and West Sacramento residents. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Maria Grijalva. I'm the director of the Latino Information and Resource Center. I'm here to update the community and enter into public record the latest on our redistricting efforts, or actually, it was listed in, as Item 1 in the closed session, existing litigation. We're the nonprofit organization that helped eliminate Jim Crow voting in West Sacramento. In 2018, we filed to get rid of at-large elections. West Sacramento used to have district elections, until the former mayor, Cabaldan, implemented Jim Crow voting. Well, I'm here to report that my attorney, Scott Rafferty, is finally getting paid, after seven years, mind you. He's getting a little bit over $100,000. I think the public deserves to know that. And this is what our taxpayers are going to. So, our taxpayers paid our city attorney to fight tooth and nail to keep at-large elections in place. Back in 2018, we paid the city attorney's firm, Cronic, about $300,000. How much do you, does everybody think we paid fighting at the appellate level, at the appellate court? I assume another $200,000. So, so, anyway, I wanted to let everybody know that that is the latest, and I also wanted to remind everyone for the public record that the former mayor had me falsely arrested during his reelection, when I was supporting Joe DeAnda. This is public information, and it's important that our community know the facts. He filed a bogus complaint with the California Department of Fair Political Practices Commission, the FPPC, on October 2nd, 2018. By October 9th, the complaint was referred over to his buddy, West Sacramento resident, aka Yolo District Attorney, Jeff Freising. So, October 9th, I was falsely arrested, even though there was never any violation of the law, none whatsoever. In fact, it's been seven years to this date, the Fair Political Practices Commission has not cited me for anything that Jeff Freising was charging me criminally in court, for a donation I made. I mean, everybody that knows knows it's a bottle donation. And so, anyway, so, it's important that the community deserve to be informed and have transparency, because it's important to know where our tax dollars are going, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Grijalva.
We have no additional requests to speak on this item.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is our consent agenda items 2 through 7. Are there any requests to remove an item for questions or presentation? None? And I do want to open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, we have a request to speak on Item 2. Michael Root.
Welcome back, Mr. Root.
Okay, well, like I started to tell you, I see that the, there's a, and I wasn't even gonna speak on this, except that I came and read the agenda today, and you guys are, and I also heard from a neighbor that they're coming, they're trying to come after another 10%. Well, that, according to the thing, then that's gonna be a 20% increase in their, they're not clean, they're not neat, they're, they ran three grinders down my street at 6:30 this morning. They're, they're, they were still working when I left to come to the meeting here. They're, I don't think that we need to have some better inspection out there on the project, so that the city doesn't need to spend 20% more over the budget of the project for not good work. We're paying for quality product, we should get a quality product. And if it comes to it after, then they can go after the inspection reports. This is the way I dealt with business when I was in the industry. You don't, you don't start getting money ahead of time, and I mean, I feel like it's gonna get into a bad, a bad way with the contractor, because he's gonna try to nickel and dime us, which is what a lot of them end up doing. And I don't think that an extra 20% on, you know, if they wanna file some claims and go after it after the project is finished for justification, that's one thing. But I don't think that the city should be on the hook for, you know, incompetent or lack of a good product.
Thank you, Mr. Root.
Okay, thanks.
No additional requests to speak on the consent agenda items.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll accept a motion to approve this consent agenda.
So moved.
All right. Madam Clerk, Councilmember Akala moved, and Councilmember Early seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sopiezio-Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right, next, I'd like to open the special session, sorry, the special meeting, and we have one consent agenda item, is there a request to pull for session? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda item.
Second.
Mayor Protem, Sopiezio-Hall moved, and Councilmember Akala seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sopiezio-Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right, that is approved, and I'm closing the special meeting and returning to our regular meeting. Next, we have our public hearing agenda item 8 under Community Development, is a public hearing regarding an appeal to proposed tentative parcel map number 5247 at 3071 Davis Road. And I am required to read the following. It's the Zappara Appeal Hearing Procedure Summary. The city council's adopted hearing procedure policy, Roman numeral 3-a-3, requires that the mayor read a summary of the procedures into the record. The following is that summary, which can also serve as a script for the hearing process, which is why I'm reading it. The mayor will open the hearing. The mayor will ask all mayors of the council to publicly announce any testimony or evidence received outside of the hearing process, ex parte communication. And I'll ask now, was there any ex parte communication?
No.
No. All right. The mayor will ask, and I have none, the mayor will ask all council members to announce any conflicts of financial interest with a material effect, and member shall disqualify herself?
Actually, Mayor, I, one year ago, roughly one year ago, I did speak to the individual, I don't wanna butcher the person's name, Zapparo? Okay, I did. With, actually, staff.
Oh.
I don't know if that count says.
Thank you for sharing.
Yes.
Okay. And we have our attorney here, who's helping us with this special hearing. Would you like to announce who you are and your role here today?
Yes, my name is Ryan Rafferty, and I am, my, my name is Ryan Rafferty, and I'm here serving to assist the mayor in the process, the procedures of the hearing. I have no input or say on the actual substantive nature that is being heard, or rather, to guide the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty. And so, whenever we have any questions such as this, we will ask Mr. Rafferty for the procedure, and then we will ask our city attorney for any guidance on the policy or any part of the hearing. So, that's the two attorneys that we have here and their roles.
We've got legal covered.
In case anybody has any questions, and which direction to ask your questions. So, the mayor will also ask council members to announce any conflicts of financial interest with any material effect, and member shall disqualify herself, which I don't think anybody has. And the mayor will ask the hearing examiner if any exhibits were received past the 10-day due date, which is August 11th, 2025, that the council may want to consider admitting. And it is the council's decision as to whether to accept any late exhibits. So, with the hearing examiner present, were there any late exhibits that were submitted that we can consider?
There was, Madam Mayor, there was a, was been marked as appellate Exhibit A, and it was submitted after the deadline. It is a petition from the neighboring individuals of the appellant with regard to their desires in this particular appeal. Of note for you and for the council is that when coming into this particular appeal, it was being appealed under two grounds, number, condition number 7 and condition number 15. In this petition, the appellant is withdrawing essentially their appeal as to condition number 7, which would leave the council only one issue or condition to debate about today.
All right, thank you.
You have the authority to accept it if you want, even though it's outside of the window of the mayor, so chooses, in the council.
At this time, Mr. Hearing Examiner, do we decide whether to accept it?
Yes, you would decide amongst the council whether or not you want to accept this petition as an exhibit.
I would like to consult with our staff on their recommendation for this, or the city attorney, whoever wants to. Yes, please.
I haven't actually seen the petition, so I'm, the petition is from the neighbors?
The petition reports to be from the neighbors. There are signatures, but there's no printed names next to them, but they did list their addresses, and a copy of the petition's being provided to you.
So, then, are we seeing that number 7, the appeal letters claim that required utility undergrounds, is that what we're seeing?
We're gonna, we're gonna.
No, it deals with the condition of the Frontage Road, one of the appellate.
And that's been withdrawn as an appeal?
The Frontage?
Yeah.
Yes, that is what, that.
Okay. So, only at issue at this juncture is 15, as the sole issue that's before the?
If you accept that petition.
Understood.
Because that petition is based on the condition that they're only appealing that, number 15.
I think there may be a tiny bit of confusion that the appellant can clear up. The petition is from neighbors. Mr. Zapparo is not a party on that petition, so I think he needs to answer the question as to whether he is withdrawing a portion of the appeal. And he'll have that opportunity to speak. So, I think maybe we can wait until he speaks, and you can ask him specifically, is he withdrawing his appeal as to either of the petition?
And I just speak in accepting that particular petition, that was what the appellant had represented, when I'd been advised by the.
So, the appellant presented this petition as part of his late submission of his exhibit to, and is, so the appellant is the one that presented it?
No, it was presented, I believe, by his wife.
Oh, okay.
The petition was dropped off at the city clerk's office yesterday afternoon.
There was a conversation with regard to the meaning of this particular petition.
Can we get a copy of that?
If Mr. Zapparo is present, you could ask him.
Zapparo? Where's Mr. Zapparo?
Yes, you can stand up. Go ahead, sir.
I think we can, we can take this a little bit out of turn, let him answer the question as to whether he's withdrawing either part of his.
I'm the one that did create that paragraph. I am not an attorney. I was just encouraged by one of our neighbors to say, try to find out what the rest of the community feels about this particular requirement, condition of approval. And so, it only represents the undergrounding requirement, not the others. And I wanted the neighbors to understand that I wasn't appealing the whole thing, although I would like to. I realize that we have to have a win-win here, if we have something that I have to give up, and so I'm willing to do that. But I'm, that has to do with the undergrounding, and I'm the one that wrote that, and I'm the one that secured the signatures.
Just to clarify, for procedural purposes, you're withdrawing your appeal then to condition number 7 with regard to the Frontage Road?
Yes.
Okay.
He's saying undergrounding, you're saying frontage. I'm genuinely confused.
I think number 7 is frontage, and number 15 is the underground.
That is correct. There were two original bases for the appeal. One was the condition that required undergrounding. That was condition 15. That was condition 15, condition seven related to frontage improvement. What I understand you to be saying is, you are now withdrawing your objection to the frontage improvement condition. However, you continue to want the council to consider whether you should be required to do undergrounding.
Correct.
All right, I think that's what I understand as well. Okay.
That would mean your appeal isn't.
Yes, I'm going to reflect back.
Okay.
If you're okay with that, Mayor. So, frontage, you're saying, yes, the neighbors want it, I want it, putting words slightly in your mouth.
Yeah, that is putting words in my mouth. Neither the neighbors nor I want that.
Okay.
Nor do we feel that it's necessary, but it is one of, appears to be a non-negotiable requirement by the planning department, that I, as the one dividing the land, bear that cost.
Begrudgingly agree.
Yes.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you.
That's a good word.
Thank you, sir.
Should I stay here, or?
No, we're okay. Need to finish reading. Long list of things. So we, so we are, are we, I think at this point, we now understand what the additional late submission is, and decide whether to accept this late exhibit, which will remove appeal number seven, which is the frontage.
It doesn't, it doesn't remove condition seven, it's just the petition from the neighbors stating their opinion.
Stating their opinion, but the.
Appellant.
Appellant is saying that he agrees and is willing to take that off the table.
That's what he, correct, that's what he stated.
Everybody okay with that, staff? You're all good?
Do we need a vote on it, or is that just a?
I don't think we need a vote on it.
I don't, I don't think it requires a vote. It's his petition and his appeal, and therefore he can withdraw any grounds that he wants.
Is everybody okay with it? All right, we're all good, okay. Next is, staff will present the staff report, place relevant documents into the record, and respond to questions from city council. Staff may present any testimony and relevant evidence not previously presented in the written report. Not yet. Evidence, I still got a few more bullets to read, Elijah. Evidence is relevant if it proves or disproves a material fact in dispute. The mayor will specify the time the applicant has for his, her presentation rebuttal. And I am looking at, I wanted to ask councils and also the applicant whether 20 minutes is enough to, okay, good, I thank you so much, to present their appeal. No testimony or witnesses will be heard at this time. All public comments testimony will be heard during the public comment testimony. And members of the public and/or individuals in support or against the appellant will be given the opportunity to present testimony. Public comment testimony will be limited to three minutes per person. Mayor will specify the time the appellant has for his or her response to the testimony or evidence. Appellant will be given five minutes to respond, but may not introduce new testimony or evidence or restate direct testimony. Staff may provide responses to testimony received from the appellant applicant public and may be asked to answer questions from the city council. The mayor will close or continue the hearing. The city council will deliberate on the matter and adopt findings if appropriate. The final decision may be deferred for preparation of draft findings consistent with the preliminary decision. All right. Elijah, you may proceed.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council members. Elijah Ortega, Associate Planner, Community Development Department. So item number eight tonight is an appeal of tentative parcel map number 5247, located at 3071 Davis Road. Staff's recommended actions are as follows: first, to conduct the public hearing for the appeal; and second, to adopt Resolution 2567 to deny the appeal and confirm the Planning Commission's approval of tentative parcel map number 5247, and affirm the sequo finding. So the project is located on a five-acre undeveloped property at the intersection of Davis Road and Seymour Avenue. The property boundary is outlined here in red. This property and much of the surrounding area is zoned rural estates and is located within the rural core area of the West Sacramento General Plan. So here is the approved plan to split the five acres into four parcels, each one and a quarters acres in size. The dash line areas represent the driveways and building sites, and the dotted areas containing the parcel numbers are where the septic system leach fields are. Each property does have its own septic and well system, the locations of which were reviewed and approved by Yellow County. Septic was approved for these properties as there is no sewer service on Davis or Seymour, with the closest connection being 1,200 feet to the north on Marshall. And you can see here that Parcels 1 and 2 take direct driveway access from Davis Road, and Parcels 3 and 4 have a shared driveway with access from Seymour Avenue. So the appellant's appeal was filed on May 12th, shortly after the Planning Commission approved the map. The appeal requested the city council to amend condition of approval number 15 regarding underground utilities, and as we just heard, the applicant confirmed rescinding of the request for appeal on condition of approval number seven regarding frontage improvements. So all property subdivisions in the city are required to comply with Municipal Code Title 16. Title 16 applies to all property divisions regardless of the number of parcels being created, meaning it applies equally to both parcel maps and subdivision maps. Among the requirements in the municipal code is a requirement for undergrounding of overhead utilities. Specifically, this requires the subdivider to underground existing overhead utilities along the property frontage. The appellant did request a waiver of this requirement from the Planning Commission, as may be provided in subsection 3, and the Planning Commission denied this request. Requiring utility undergrounding has been a longstanding policy of the city and is reflected in a number of council adopted policy documents, including the West Sacramento General Plan, the Southport Framework Plan, and the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. More recently, utility undergrounding has a heightened importance as overhead utilities lose power more frequently and for longer durations of time during extreme heat waves, high wind events, and storms. In addition to loss of power, downed utility lines pose a significant public safety hazard in neighborhoods like this, where roadways are narrow and access is limited, especially if a downed utility pole blocks roadway access. So underground utilities serve to create a more stable and reliable utility network overall for residents and provides greater climate resiliency for the city. So staff has prepared this diagram here where you can see that there are four utility poles along the property frontage which would be required to be taken down. The overhead utilities in this neighborhood consist of electrical service and cable service. Because electrical service is provided by PG&E, the appellant would be required to open a formal project with PG&E to design and estimate the undergrounding. The appellant would also be required to coordinate with the cable provider located on the overhead line to bring that service underground as well. And this type of work is typically done simultaneously with both utilities placed in a joint trench. The appellant has provided a number of informal cost estimates for the undergrounding project. However, at this time, no formal estimate from PG&E has been received. Without a formal estimate and design, staff is unable to verify what the cost of the undergrounding project will be. The appellant also claims that four new utility poles would be required to be installed on neighboring properties as a result of the project. However, in order to determine if new utility poles would be required and where those new poles would be located, would also require a former, formal project design from PG&E. The appellant also claims that similar projects were not required to underground utilities. Staff prepared this diagram showing recently approved maps where overhead utilities were considered. The appellant's property is shown in red, and similar projects shown in purple, green, yellow, and blue. Beginning first with the property that was indicated in purple at 3895 Marshall Road, this project is a nine-lot subdivision with 700 feet of overhead utility frontage, approved by the Planning Commission in 2023. The project was required to underground the overhead utilities along the property frontage on Marshall Road. And here is an image of the property frontage on Marshall Road showing the overhead utilities removed, as was required. Moving next to the property that was indicated in green at 3245 Marshall Road, this project is a four-lot parcel map with 600 feet of overhead utility frontage, approved by the Planning Commission in 2021. The project is required to underground the overhead utilities along the property frontage on Marshall Road. Here is an image of the property frontage on Marshall Road, showing the overhead utilities that will be removed. There is currently construction of homes ongoing at this property. However, the homes will not receive a certificate of occupancy until the undergrounding work is completed. Moving to the property in yellow at 2370 Harmon Road, this project is a four-lot parcel map with 200 feet of overhead utility frontage, approved by the Planning Commission in 2023. The Planning Commission approved a waiver of the utility undergrounding for this project due to cost and no net gain in removed utility poles. And here is an image of the property frontage on Harmon Road, showing the overhead utilities that will remain in place. And lastly, the property in blue at 2135 Davis Road, this project is a three-lot parcel map with 150 feet of overhead utility frontage, approved by the Planning Commission in 2024. The Planning Commission approved a waiver of the utility undergrounding for this project due to cost and no net gain in removed utility poles. And here is an image of the property frontage on Davis Road, showing the overhead utilities that will remain. So going back to the exhibit here, these examples demonstrate that the Planning Commission has waived the undergrounding requirement for small projects with minimal overhead utility frontage. While the appellant's project is only four lots, it has over 900 feet of overhead utility frontage, more than all four of the other similar projects. The primary reason for that is that this project is located on a corner lot with utilities located on both frontages. I did have this presentation prepared with the assumption that the appellant was asking for an amendment on the frontage improvements, which is condition number seven, so I'm going to skip this section of the presentation. So as a reminder, staff is recommending that the council conduct the public hearing and adopt Resolution 2567 to deny the appeal and uphold the conditions of approval for utility undergrounding. This concludes staff's presentation, and I will be available for questions as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Elijah. Next, we will have the, Mr. Zapara, are you going to be the one presenting? We'll have 20 minutes.
Aye. Just to address Planning's last statement, two specific projects near me that are similar were not required to take down the street poles. Everybody knows that from the street to the individual developed home has to be underground. That's not up for dispute. It's taking them down in the street. And it was Planning in our last meeting that put a graphic on the screen that showed four additional poles, maybe more, going up to support the undergrounding of these four poles. That didn't come from PG&E, it came from Planning. So to come tonight and say that, you know, it's just going to take these down and everything's going to be hunky-dory, there's no new poles going up, it's just simply not true. And he is correct. No one knows the cost. There's no one in this room, me, Planning, no one knows the cost of taking these particular poles down. Taking one down, taking two down in a straight line is one thing. Taking a corner pole down where it's going four directions is an entirely different animal. If those then have to be taken across the street, then the newly paved Seymour gets torn up in at least two places. On top of that, PG&E just replaced two of those four poles this last year. And replaced one to the east on Davis Road in the lot just next to mine. So they have every intention of maintaining those poles. They told me that they're not fond of moving power underneath the deeper ditches, because now you're looking at a 15-foot trench, so you don't run into that thing by cleaning the ditches. So there's quite a few mitigating circumstances for the pole removal and undergrounding. But though I did not want to agree to widen the road, I do understand it's a city ordinance, and I do understand the need for some of these roads to be wider. I just don't think any individual person such as myself, which is not a developer, not a subdivision creator, should bear that singular cost. I think the city should share that cost, but dealing with planning as I have done to point, I realize that was never going to happen. So that's why I withdrew the request. But it is flat-out impossible for me to do both. To widen the roads, move the ditches, create new shoulders, pave what I've had done, it's going to be well over $200,000. The minor estimate that PG&E gave me for moving these particular poles starts at 450. One of the subcontractors told me it could easily go to 6 or 650, just for those four poles, because they're those four poles. If there were no homes on the other side, or if this was a field and we're starting a new street, that's an entirely different thing. But for me to underground the poles and do the road improvements before it's all done and said could easily reach $1 million. It's not possible for me to do that with this project. My understanding is that it needs to be commensurate with the project. This would not be. So I maintain, I'm giving up one to hopefully receive a waiver on the other, and I don't need 20 minutes more.
Thank you so much. Mr. Zapara? All right. At this time, we will ask for members of the public. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak on this item?
Jana Haynes.
Good evening, council. My name is Jana Haynes.
Second. Sorry, my timer is.
Don't short me. I probably won't take the whole time.
Okay, ready.
My name's Jana Haynes. I am the daughter of the applicant. I've been a West Sacramento resident for 15 years. I live in Sopizio-Hall's district. And my parents moved here to be near me, to be near my kids. I have, sorry. I hope not to do this. I have two kids, they're six and eight, and they attend Stonegate. And my parents moved here to be with us, to be near us, to be near my children, so that they could grow up near their grandparents. And they bought this property to give them somewhere to play and be with them. And they bought it two years ago, and they still have not made any substantial steps towards what they're trying to do, which is build a house, and build a house that they can live in for the rest of their lives while my kids grow up. And one of the things that I just want to consider is that they're not developers. The only reason they want to subdivide is to fund this build. They cannot build without it. And being treated as developers, because there may or may not be four houses at some point, is unfair. They're going to build one house, period. Whoever buys those properties may build houses, they may not. Somebody may buy two lots, and then they'll only build one house. There's no guarantee that there will be four homes in this five acres at any given time. And so to place the undue financial burden on the one person who you know is going to build a house is not, it's not fair, as he said, it's not, you know, relevant to the project. You know, my parents are incredible neighbors. They have been sowing their finances into this city and into this property for two years, so far with no real return on their investment. They eat at these restaurants, you know, they spend their tax dollars here. And if the goal of this particular requirement is to underground the lines for safety, if you don't waive this appeal, it's not going to happen. They will have to pick up and leave. They cannot stay on this property if they cannot build this home, and they cannot build this home if they have to underground the lines. And so, one thing begats another. They cannot move forward with this particular project if this requirement stays in place, and you still won't accomplish your goal, which is undergrounding the lines for safety purposes. That will remain. And whoever buys the property next may not build, and those lines will still never get under. under grounded. And so if that is the end game, this is not the way to accomplish it. There has to be some other way to do that without driving away good residents that are making good decisions about improving their neighborhood for the sake of being here with their family. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello. My name's Amy Morrow. I am a licensed land surveyor living in West Sac for over 30 years. I am the one trying to help the Zaparas get this map approved. A lot of discussion has been going on about the poles and their location and whether it makes any sense to underground just to put up new poles across the street. So I was very pleased to see that there have been some projects where there are no net gain has prevailed, and the project was allowed to continue without disrupting the whole neighborhood just to erect new poles and go into that incredible cost. We've been through this process for about two years now. At first, there was no issue with the poles. And then we were told there was an issue with the poles. And then we were in meetings where we said this usually gets waived, and it's very possible for it to get waived. And we were told that the poles could remain. So I revised the map again, like the 13th time, I think. And then all of a sudden, it says they have to be undergrounded. So it seems like the common sense went out the window. But it's very encouraging to see that it can happen. And in his unique section and piece of land, it just doesn't make sense. So I would ask that you waive that requirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no additional requests to speak.
At this time, we will see whether the appellant would like to respond. If you don't, you have five minutes to respond.
I don't need five minutes, thanks. About two years ago, maybe two and a half years ago, I had in public, right in this counter over here, a discussion with Dave Tilly, who at the time was in charge of the planning. I didn't know the pecking order at that point. I don't know where Andrea Oss was at that time. We did not have a conversation. But at that conversation, and I do believe Elijah was present, Dave Tilly said, "Well, we can't promise anything, but the likelihood of those poles being under grounded, being waived, is probably pretty good." So I advanced our project based on that conversation. Our surveyor is correct. Amy was in a meeting just a couple of months ago with us about this particular concern. And the city engineer, Mark Collier, and Elijah were present. And at that discussion, it was determined that the poles would not be an invasion into improving the frontage, i.e. that they could stay. She was asked to correct her map to represent that. And it was a shock to me when I saw the condition that they were going back to, no, we're asking for the whole enchilada. And so we called for a special meeting, not a council, a Planning Commission meeting. So Amy and myself, that was one meeting. But then, just a couple of months ago, I took a true developer with me, and we had a personal meeting with Andrea Oss in the room. And we laid out all the reasons why we felt that this was an undue burden. And they heard everything. Everybody talked about what it would be, and they said, "We'll, you know, take a little bit of time, we'll talk about this." Two weeks went by. I got a phone call from Tristan, who is the second person I've dealt with, not really, just by invitation, by introduction. Having gone through three different heads during Yolo County's situation, each one, my unique project was the first one they had dealt with. The head of Yolo County's Environmental Department, my project was each of their first project. Things changed, 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 and I spent tens and tens of thousands of dollars with Yolo County. I am now doing that with the city. Planning has delayed, delayed, changed their minds, made map changes that would indicate in my favor, and then pulled back on that. And then when I get the agenda for tonight that we're, they're recommending that this august council deny this appeal, it just boggles my mind. I'm willing to give a take, a give and take here. I'm willing to put down another couple of hundred thousand dollars, which is no big deal to anybody else here, but to me, it means that I am not going to get as far along in my project as I would like if I'm able to build at all. So I'm just saying, right now, there's a bit of an impasse between myself and Planning, and I am asking that we split this thing. I'll do the road improvements, and you lay down your request for undergrounding. So I am appealing that particular condition.
Thank you, Mr. Zapara. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Zapara. Now we have staff that you may provide responses to the testimony received from the appellant applicant public and be able to answer any questions from the council members.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So there's been some discussion about a meeting that occurred in April with city staff regarding the utility poles related to the frontage improvements. So at that time, staff did hold a meeting with Mr. Zapara and his surveyor, and it was discovered that there was actually an error in the map, which showed that the pole at the intersection of Davis and Seymour would be within the traveled lane of the roadway after the frontage improvements were constructed. So that was an error. So we had Mrs. Zapara and his surveyor go back and revise the map to show that that was actually not going to be the case, and that the road widening could occur without any conflicts with the utility poles. Now, staff doesn't have the authority to waive the undergrounding requirement unilaterally. Only the Planning Commission can do so. So I think there was obviously some confusion in communication there with Mr. Zapara. But just to clarify, it was discovered during that meeting that there was an error on the map that was prepared that we had them correct. At this time, that's all I have prepared in terms of response to Mr. Zapara's testimony.
Thank you. Mr. Ottega, don't leave. Let me see if any of the council members have any questions? Councilmember Early?
Okay. So I just, I want to clarify and make sure I'm understanding the information that we've gotten here. It sounds like we do have situations in which we do waive the undergrounding, and it sounds like potentially they're associated with the amount of distance, maybe the feet. It sounds like potentially it's also associated with whether there'll be a net gain in regards to costs. I don't know if I said that correctly. Is that policy, are we, is that an official policy, or how does that, how does that work?
So those are all topics that have been considered by the Planning Commission on prior maps where utility undergrounding has come up.
Got it. Okay. So there is a world where it sounds like some of the conversations that Mr. Zaparo and his surveyor had, starting a couple of years ago, where although clearly staff doesn't have that authority, that there could have maybe been some assumptions or potentially suggestions that, hey, these situations have happened in the past in regards to waiving, and potentially that was, based on that understanding of that is an option, the project moved forward. I think that's more commentary than anything, but, okay. I can't imagine a world, I'm actually dealing with this right now, in which you go into a project, understanding it to be one thing, and then whether it is forces outside or contractors that you're working with, in this case, the city, the county, that there are understandings that then change over the course of several years. I can imagine the frustration. I understand the costs. And I do think that from the point of view of anyone wanting to build in our city, that it is important to have a level of understanding of what are the policies, what can I really understand and depend on, right? That way, I can appropriately estimate costs of this huge investment. And I always say we're fortunate to have people who want to come and invest in our city, whether that be a business or whether that be building and developing as well. Because again, I feel like our city benefits from that investment, and so we want to encourage and incentivize that. It, I do know that it sounds like potentially our team will work on, or I would ask or request that our team work on having that level of transparency and consistency regarding this policy. And from what at least I've heard, that I think that because of the subjectivity, right, that exists right now around this, that I would lean towards wanting to not actually have Mr. Zaparo put in undergrounding for various reasons, whether it's the cost also over the past couple of years. And I've spoken to Mr. Zaparo, the confusion around some of this, and this isn't my district. And so I feel very comfortable and confident that that is something that our residents and the local community would want to be able to see this through. So that's, that will, that is where I would lean towards in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Early. Any other questions? Councilmember Mayor Protim?
Okay, my mic's on now. Tell me a little bit about the poles or the undergrounding in this neighborhood. Are a majority of the homes still above ground? And this will lead me to my next question.
The majority of the residences in this neighborhood are served by overhead power.
Is there a possibility that sometime in the future, these property owners in a larger scale would get together and decide as a district, as a neighborhood organization, to work together at a larger scale and underground the utility lines?
Yeah. Hi, good evening. Tristan Osborne, the Planning Manager here at the city. I think that is a possibility. You see that type of thing for different infrastructure districts, different corridors where folks can opt into a district that would probably need to be spearheaded by the city initially, to look at something like that and see if it was feasible. But it would be an option we could look into further.
This was my only question. I wasn't ready, wasn't going to have mine yet.
Other questions? Okay. So we can bring it back to council now and deliberate on the matter and take actions on whether to adopt the findings, approve the rejection of, that the appellant has requested. And the final decisions will be worked on with staff. So I just wanted to see where council would like to go with this.
Madam Mayor, before we begin, if I just may, you still have the outstanding issue of the appellant Exhibit A. Like if, if you're accepting it, then a copy should be given to all of you. I think you have accepted it, but you haven't received a copy.
Can we, I did ask for a copy, but.
Okay. So then it would be accepted as part of your evidence for consideration. That's all.
All right, thank you so much.
I just want to make sure you have that before you close it.
Thank you so much for. All right, everybody now has Exhibit, oh, there goes Norma. Exhibit A. Everybody can see Exhibit A and understands it?
Yeah.
Is that for Norma? Hey. And I personally have taken a look at, I'm a planning commissioner in the past and have heard similar matters. Have also seen past commissioners after me waive the requirement, and that happened in the planning commission. I'm a proponent of undergrounding, however, placing the cost on one homeowner is pretty significant and impossible. And I think that, taking a look at a CFD, but there is so much vacant land, and a lot of the homeowners have large acreage, that it's just going to be really expensive, not just for one block, but for like whole strip, because you're going to have to balance out, from what I understand. If you put in, if you pull out a pole and you don't take care of it down the road somewhere, you're just going to have to compensate. I don't know all the mechanics, but what little I know, I do think it's, it's quite the juggling act when it comes to power poles. In my experience, these power poles have come down during severe storms. So I do get that we will be hearing from our, you know, residents. Mr. Zapara, I'm going to give him your telephone. I'm just kidding. It's, we will be hearing from them, and they'll blame PG&E. And it's something, we really push PG&E to come out and repair these downed power poles as soon as possible. And undergrounding is, has been a priority in every jurisdiction. I only wish PG&E would step up and do their part, because it's safer, prevents, you know, climate action catastrophes such as fires and other incidents throughout, you know, the city that we've seen happen throughout the city. We've seen a fire from a power pole. We've seen them down. We've seen, you know, the lines spread all over this, you know, neighborhoods. We get complaints from certain parts of the city more than others. But I think it's spread evenly to some extent. So you'll, you'll, you'll hear about it when you have your storm, if you haven't had one yet. But, but yes, I think, I appreciate you presenting, Mr. Zaparo, your request. I know it took a lot of work and courage, and you've been through a long time at this. And, you know, I will likely, will probably be in support of rejecting staff's recommendation. Any other comments from, who's, Councilmember Orrosco?
As somebody who's spent a considerable amount of time in the dark over the last, this past week, having a tree fall on a downed power line, I understand the importance of ensuring that neighborhoods don't go down when our power lines are getting severed and people are left in the cold. And not in this case, but in the past, we have been left for sometimes upwards of weeks when we don't have a response in the state streets to our problems. So I do appreciate the effort for our city to move forward with undergrounding. I think that that's the wave of the future and how we should be treating our city and as we upgrade into a better complexion for the residents and just giving them a better community as far as having these old infrastructures graduated out and moving forward. I think that that should be our policy moving forward. When I'm looking at this, I can't look, for me as a policymaker, at the virtues of any individual representative of a project. For me, I mean, I appreciate that, you know, subjectivity in this case, it makes me feel a little uncomfortable. I want to make sure that there's a policy in line that I can follow and be guided by instead of having these one-off decisions, because I don't want it to ever be a situation where, oh, we're being unfair, or we're making decisions from the dais as to how we move forward on making these decisions. Instead, I'd rather see, you know, have more of a solid precedent moving forward. With that stated, I do agree with my colleagues in with this particular issue, and I'm, I appreciate that the appellant brought this before the, before the council, and I appreciate that we have the opportunity to look at this issue and move forward with it, as this being an example of the very difficult decisions that we have to make. And that's not to discredit the Planning Commission's position, because I understand the overarching policy, direction that we would like to move as a city. So with that. Um, so with that, I, um, I appreciate the, the withdrawal and the frontage. I think that is a very important, uh, positioned, uh, excuse me, not positioned, it's a very important decision that needed to be made. Um, not on behalf of the appellant, but rather as a city. We definitely need those frontage improvements. On this one, however, um, I'm going to sit with my fellow council members and, um, and in agreement.
Yeah, I'll go. Um, yeah, so coming into this meeting, I was looking at, you know, our two different conditions, seven and 15. And, uh, the improvement to the rural road standard was really important for the safety of the neighborhood, to get the fire chucked in and out. Um, so I'm, it's, it's such a wonderful thing to see, um, that be in agreement, that we could take that off the table and be in agreement that the railroad, um, improvement, rural road standards would happen. Um, as for the undergrounding of the power lines, when I was sitting, um, with staff on the briefing, um, one of the things I really struggled with was the inconsistency that we'd had, um, over the years on what got undergrounded and what didn't. And, um, that led to a conversation about actual policy to be consistent because I want to be fair. Um, and based on the feedback we're getting about the costs and no net gain. And I, I hear your frustration of being in this for two years and hearing different things from different people. My guess is we had different planning commissions at a different time, very subjective. Everybody's got a different opinion about all of this. And that's not, I, I don't believe that's how we should govern. Um, and so looking at this specifically, I agree with my colleagues. Um, I think moving forward with the railroad standards, um, is important. And I'm glad we came to that agreement. But not having a requirement to underground the power lines. Um, and like we said, rejecting the staff's recommendation on that. Um, I would love the opportunity to, in the future, to look at a district in that area and see if there's a way that we could work with the residents if desired to do a larger undergrounding project. Because, um, these rural neighborhoods, um, you know, if we work together with economies of scale, there's opportunity to do that together. Um, but putting the burden on one property owner in this area, um, just doesn't seem to make sense at this time based on kind of the history we've had.
Mayor? I just want to say, I, I respect the work that our staff and the planning commission does, but this is one time that I do not agree with the recommendation that was made along with my colleagues. I'm in agreement. Right. With that, I want to just thank staff for all your hard work. I know it's a lot of hard work. Uh, um, I hope you all can continue to work together, you proceed, moving forward. Um, I, um, we want to ask, um, for a question to our, um, hearing examiner. We accept the exhibit to waive condition number seven that was, that the appellant presented as part of. Is that like a motion we make? And then we also reject staff recommendation? Is that the motion we should?
You would say that you accept the withdrawal of condition number seven as the appellant requested, leaving only the decision with regard to condition number 15. And we hereby reject the staff recommendation as to that condition.
Thank you so much for that.
You need a motion?
We need a motion for that, exactly.
Okay, and you want it to be, I'm just going to try. Yeah, I'm going to try this. I would like to motion to accept the appellant's, um,
Withdrawal?
Withdrawal, thank you, on number seven, the frontage, and reject staff's, uh, recommendation for undergrounding.
It sounds great.
All right, there we go.
If I could make one suggestion?
Yes, of course.
I think that's fine, but we can revise the resolution to reflect that. And if you're all comfortable with that, we can make that provision with Mr. Raftery's help and then present it to the mayor for signature.
Yes, we're all good with that.
All right. And, and then for clarity, um, next step for our applicant? Oh, I appreciate that. Will staff be reaching out to them to talk about next steps in this process?
With that, Madam Clerk, Councilmember Early moved. Mayor Protem Sopizio Hull seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Ocala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sopizio Hull?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye, thank you so much.
Done. Next is item nine, under finances, a public hearing and consideration of adoption of resolution 25-78, amending the book of fees. Who, oh, Ms. Andrea Als.
I got the gavel. Andrea, are you waiting on a presentation? Are you at the PowerPoint?
I am, actually.
Just checking in on that.
I can, I can begin now. And that is not the right one, but okay, even more reason I'm going to go ahead and dive in. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I'm Andrea Als, your Director of Community Development. Um, I'm here tonight to present the proposed update to the city's book of fees, uh, for the community development department. Uh, this item was, uh, the topic of, uh, the development improvement enhancements, uh, or enhancements workshop that occurred on the July 16th city council meeting. Um, this item requests that the city council conduct a public hearing and, uh, that the city council consider adoption of resolution 2578 to amend the community development related portion of the city's book of fees. First, I'd like to start with introductions. I'm joined once again by Director of Finance, Roberta Raper, uh, Senior Finance Analyst, Mark Rodaville, and Courtney Ramos, the Senior Vice President for, uh, Matrix Consulting, our partner in this process. Uh, why we're here, uh, just as we discussed in July, it's the first full-scale review of the community development fees since 2017. In July, we, uh, shared preliminary findings and received a very valuable feedback from, um, the council. Tonight's action is, uh, to consider formal adoption. So what this is and what this is not, I wanted to pause for a bit and just clarify exactly what we're doing here tonight. Uh, just importantly, what we're not, uh, considering. Uh, this is an update of user fees, the charges applicants pay for specific services or products provided by the city, uh, such as permits, plan checks, and inspections. Uh, this is not an update of development impact fees. Impact fees are one-time charges on new development projects to help fund public infrastructure projects, roads, uh, parks, um, utilities, et cetera. Uh, those are separate and are not part of this action tonight. We are also not updating any of the pass-through fees. Uh, those are fees that would go directly to other agencies like our school districts, um, state regulatory fees, et cetera. Those remain outside the scope of this update. Tonight's action again is really just focused solely on the fees that recover the city's cost for providing, uh, particular specific development services to applicants. Uh, the process and timeline thus far, uh, the city engaged with Matrix, uh, to conduct the cost of service study, their bottom-up analysis, as I talked about in July, calculated the full cost of providing services across planning, uh, building, engineering, code enforcement, sustainability, fire prevention. Uh, we presented the high-level summary to the Chamber's Economic uh, and Government Affairs Committee in June and, uh, held a workshop with you in July and presented the findings then, uh, at the Chamber's EGA committee meeting at their August 12th, uh, meeting. So some of the key issues that were revealed under the study included that most categories, we were not recovering the full cost for service, particularly in planning, uh, development, engineering, and code enforcement. Uh, also building. In some areas such as permit renewals, uh, fees are higher than actual costs and, and we are adjusting those downward. Uh, we also restructured some of the key divisions for clarity and transparency. Uh, to cover long-term planning and technology adjustments, which are critical, uh, we are introducing a general plan maintenance fee and updating our existing technology surcharge. Finally, we'll be updating the book of fees annually to reflect adjustments, uh, in the cost of service and to phase out inapplicable fees while incorporating new items, um, as they come online. So some examples of the changes, uh, building permits, we've simplified. Uh, they're more predictable in our fee structure. In the planning fees, uh, we are refining our deposits to come closer to our actual costs, memorializing fees, uh, that should have been memorialized a while ago and have eliminated, um, obsolete fees. Uh, in terms of code enforcement, we are capturing new fees for, uh, different types of inspections and establishing flat rate, uh, adjustments. Uh, we're aiming to create a fee structure that is more user-friendly, that is clarity, uh, that provides more clarity, is more transparent, and aligned with, uh, actual workload, uh, and the cost of the work, uh, effort. So alignment with, uh, July workshop, uh, feedback that we received from the council. As we move forward with this update of the book of fees, uh, we, we wanted the guidance from the council to reflect, uh, the end result that is before you tonight. Um, we did do some analysis on case studies based on, uh, council feedback. Uh, and, uh, we wanted to understand more clearly what those impacts are. Uh, we, uh, did, uh, those case studies to highlight uh, and to analyze, uh, what those, ultimately those changes would be and what the, uh, fees, if they were raised, um, what the impact would be on the, uh, bottom line. Uh, secondly, for clarity, another strong theme that we heard from council was making the book of fees more user-friendly. Um, we focused on usability, uh, developing, we will ultimately develop a, an online fee estimator, uh, and a calculator. So that will provide a lot more clarity for, um, for the development community and for those that are simply, like Mr. Sapporo, for example, the small, um, applicants that are, are simply trying to, uh, divide their lot. Uh, third is outreach. We emphasized the importance of engaging our stakeholders in this process. We were proactive in connecting with the Chamber of Commerce. Um, I also wanted to, um, uh, introduce that, uh, Chris Valencia from the, uh, Building Industry Association is here with us tonight. We've connected, um, and we talked through, uh, the book of fees changes, uh, this week. And we gathered the input from the count, the chamber once again after I was with you last month, um, and received their feedback where appropriate. Uh, in large part, they were supportive. Um, we heard a lot of support in the fact that we were making things more clear, uh, more concise, and more transparent for the public. As well as predictability, that was a very important component. Uh, in short, the draft update reflects the council's feedback and, in analyzing our case studies and providing real-world context, we, um, just want to ensure the community and industry that we are continuing to engage. In terms of strategic alignment, this, um, update supports the council's, uh, 2025 strategic principle of sustaining our core services and infrastructure. It reduces reliance on, um, general fund and community development fund subsidies, ensures compliance with state law, and positions us for long-term fiscal sustainability. So in summary, this update is long overdue. Uh, it brings our fees in line with actual service costs, uh, ensures fairness for applicants and reduces the burden, uh, potentially on the community's development fund and, um, general fund. So staff respectfully, uh, recommends the council, uh, consider adoption of resolution 2578 after opening the public hearing and receiving any testimony. Uh, that concludes my comments and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Any questions among the councilmembers on the presentation? Right, um, I'll open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, ma'am, Chris Valencia.
Right, Chris, come on up.
Hello, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Chris Valencia and I'm here on behalf of the North State Building Industry Association, representing more than 500 members of the home building industry. Uh, we appreciate the outreach that staff has made in regard to this update to the book of fees that you are considering. BIA appreciates the need for a healthily operating planning and community development department, especially as the city is taking steps to be a strong partner in building homes. As you do continue to consider fee updates, I urge you to take a holistic mindset, remembering that small increases here and there can add up. During a time of increasing economic uncertainty, it is important that we do not overburden our businesses that are facing the same fiscal challenges, doing what they can just to keep their doors open. Again, we do appreciate this collaborative approach and continue to look forward to working with the city of West Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
There are no additional requests to speak on this item.
All right, closing the public comment, bringing it back to council. Are, any questions? No questions? I do have some questions. Um, you mentioned, and I remember in the past, um, service costs and making sure that the fees are, um, being able to address some of the costs. So the service cost being staff time to be able to review, um, plans and, um, and to reduce that, sometimes if, um, for example, there could be, um, a fire, by, you know, the fire marshal permit that needs to get done. And, and, and there is another permit from another department that needs to get done. And sometimes they don't always agree. It could be conflicting information to the applicant, um, where they would need to make a, an architectural design change. And, and then it goes back to everybody. And I was hoping to figure out if this process helps streamline those, you know, potentially, you know, conflicts of, so that, so that we can see reduced staff time as well.
Yeah, and I would offer that, uh, while the book of fees doesn't specifically address that, um, the process improvements that are brought back, brought to the council that we've been working on for a couple of years now and that we are moving forward with, um, will assist us in helping streamline that so that we can make sure we're all in alignment and we reduce any redundancy, uh, that is unnecessary in our permitting process.
There, there, there is, there is one example, um, uh, where the recent Jurassic Park, 15th and Jefferson, that particular location, um, where the fire marshal requested a fire lane that is not, um, on the owner's property. And, um, those are some of the situations where I find it hard to be able to meet that requirement. And is, you know, just to explore workarounds so that, uh, so that if, um, an applicant is trying to do something that is productive in the city, um, you know, something that is, uh, going to provide good recreational opportunities, but also keep those that are frequenting this place, um, safe. Because I do take into consideration what the fire marshal's concerns are. But if there's a way to do a workaround, it's, it's just hard, especially with Union, I don't know who's, the Union Pacific's property. Yeah, that I think is like mission impossible. But if there, if, if there is a way to bring that collaboration to the table, um, to help that applicant get that access way through Union Pacific or any one of us can help reach out to bridge, you know, that, you know, the, the conversation so that we can continue to expedite and move applications along and, um, things like that. I know this is a book of fees, it's costs and trying to bring transparency, which I greatly appreciate. Um, and I'm going to, you know, dig a little more. I just couldn't see exactly all the details at this time, but, um, because of the eye surgery. But I do want to say that, um, this is a long time coming. I'm glad you've worked very hard on this and thank you for bringing it back. Um, and, and I appreciate all the hard work that all the staff has done on this. With that, if there are no other comments, I accept the motion to approve. Early moves?
Second.
Okay, um, Madam Clerk, Councilmember Early moved. Mayor Protem Sopizio Hull seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Ocala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sopizio Hull?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right. Next, under the regular agenda under capital projects is agenda item 10, consideration of West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency and amendments to the Joint Powers Agreement and future composition of the WSAFCA. and Future Composition of the WASAFCA Board. Flood Protection Manager Paul Jerkson is here to present. Welcome, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor Gavero and members of the City Council. Tonight, I'm going to ask that you, I'm going to request that you consider the JPA amendments that have been provided to you in the council agenda package, as well as consider the recommendation for the WASAFCA board composition. As you know, I believe this is a follow-up to the withdrawal of the Reclamation District 537 from the Joint Powers Agency, the agreement from the WASAFCA, which you approved in June. Since that time, I've worked with both the city attorney and the WASAFCA attorney to look at the JPA, the Joint Powers Agreement, and also discuss different approaches to looking at the composition of the particular WASAFCA board. The Joint Powers Agreement has been updated to make it contemporary with state law. There's also been some items that just needed some regular cleanup in terms of referencing some of the state laws and just bring it, making it more modern. As you know, staff's recommendation tonight in terms of the JPA board would be to continue to have one member of the City Council, one member representing the Reclamation District 900, as well as another member who would be a resident of the city and may be either a City Councilperson or a trustee from the Reclamation District. That appointee would come from both either the City Council and/or the Reclamation District. The JPA board as it currently stands would vote on those nominees. That is the staff recommendation.
Can we clarify that, please?
Yeah, I'm, there's actually a little clarification. I think the idea that is reflected in the staff report that was provided to you this evening and the modification to the JPA is that Paul is essentially correct. The council would appoint one member to WASAFCA, RD 900 board would appoint one. Then those two appointees would select a third member. That third member could be a member of the council, could be an RD trustee, doesn't have to be either of those, so long as they are a West Sacramento resident. So the process would be you would select a representative, RD 900 would select a representative, and those two representatives would select a third member.
I'm a little confused now, because the mayor normally makes the appointments of both of us to serve on the WASAFCA board. How would this be different? I realized Tom Remus was, how was Tom Remus originally? He was on way before I was.
He was appointed by 537.
That's right. So because there's no longer a third member agency, we're relying on the existing member agencies to make nominations that would be then approved by the existing WASAFCA board.
Okay.
And the idea would simply be the sitting members of the WASAFCA board, one from the City Council, one from RD 900, which are both City Council members.
Right, so the mayor would still make appointments.
The mayor would make the appointment to the council, or the council representative through the normal process. The mayor makes an appointment, the council confirms. RD 900 would make an appointment through whatever process RD 900 uses for making appointment, but it would be one of the RD 900 board members. So today, that would be another council.
Okay.
Right, because RD 900 currently is all council. Then those two individuals, and for purposes of the JPA, we're referring to them as a council representative and an RD representative, even though the practical reality is they're both going to be council members. Those two individuals then would select a third member. And the reason for that recommendation is because if you don't do that, your WASAFCA board consists of two members. And that means if one isn't available, there can't be a meeting.
For them.
Every decision has to be unanimous. It just, our recommendation is that's not a very practical way to run an organization, have two members.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, tonight, the only item of business before us is to clarify who it is that's representing the city of West Sacramento on the WASAFCA board?
No, the action before you tonight is to approve, reaction for approval?
We are actually for approval of the amendments to the agreement, as well as the, in terms of the membership, of what the membership of the JPA board would consist of.
Okay, sorry. I understood that in your.
The reason we framed it that way is because the membership of the Joint Powers Agreement, the composition of the membership is spelled out in the Joint Powers Agreement. So by approving an amendment to the agreement tonight, you will be memorializing, at least you'll be memorializing the city council's decision on how that Joint Powers Agreement should work.
Okay. But in that process, just to make sure I understand, the members that would be representing WASAFCA, one from RD 900, one from the city of West Sacramento, City Council, would appoint a third person who could be either a City Council member and RD 900 member, or a citizen?
Could be just a member of the public, so long as they were a resident of West Sacramento.
I see. Thank you.
And then the other piece that got added, just since I'm talking, is there was a question about what happens if the two members cannot agree on the third member? And so what I have suggested in the Joint Powers Agreement is, in a scenario where the two members, the City Council member and the City Council representative and the RD representative, both come to a meeting and have a nominee that they would like, and they cannot agree, they would draw lots to make a decision. So it would be cut up cards to appoint. It sounds a little odd, but that is not an unusual way of resolving situations like this for public bodies, when you've got two qualified representatives, or two qualified nominees, and the, you know, the two members cannot reach agreement on it, though they do have a chance.
Okay. Is everybody?
I understand. As a member of the WASAFCA board, I understand. You need a motion?
Motion?
Early moves? I'll second.
Okay. Councilmember Early moved. Mayor Pretend Sopizio Hall seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ocala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Sopizio Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, this item is approved. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Next is Item 11 under Capital Projects, is Consideration of Resolution 25-90, Amending the Capital Improvement Program and Appropriating Funds for the Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Budget Related to the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing Districts. Mr. Jay Shahal, please present on this very important item today.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Jake Shahal, Director of Capital Projects, and on behalf of the Department and City, I get to present on the EIFD Bond Proceeds Funding Plan. This, I wouldn't be here today standing in front of you if it wasn't for all the efforts aside by all our city departments. Our city manager, Aaron Laurel, has championed this effort on for many, many years. Also, I want to acknowledge Ariana Dammim, our Assistant City Manager of Community Service, our Finance Director, Roberta Raper, Tracy Michael, Economic Development and Housing Director, our Community Investment Manager, Mark Polhemus, and Peter Abraham, our Capital Improvement Manager, and David Wong, our Principal Engineer. They all worked very tirelessly on what I'm going to be presenting today, and hopefully we'll do this thing along. And to summarize what the actions are going to be in Item Number 11, is adopt Resolution 25-90. That's approving the amendments to the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 25-26, and appropriate funding, appropriate funds eligible for reimbursement. And a quick recap, this is the first EIFD bond issuance in California's history and for the city of West Sacramento. And to kind of go back on the background here, on August 21st, 2024, the EIFD Public Financing Authority authorized the issuance of the EIFD bonds. On April 17th, 2025, the validation, a very important point in the process, was approved by Yolo County Superior Court, and the issuance of bonds could be proceeded. On July 11th, another very important date, the bond proceeds were received by the city, and the clock started. On August 20th, today, we are coming forth to appropriate the bond proceeds towards Capital And to recap on some of the basics that were covered previously, the EIFD Number One map is composed of 14 different subareas that cover about a quarter of the city's land area. This area includes all the areas that were previously included in the former redevelopment agency. And as a reminder, district revenues generated are not a new tax on property owners. They are a result from increase in assessment values from each district's base year that was established in 2017. And now to go over some of the goals of the EIFD-funded facilities. To highlight, based on the Community Investment Plan that was created in 2012 and adopted by council, these projects are designed to assist with infrastructure, with infrastructure investment gaps, provide stable source for revenue for capital projects, and leverage and induce private investment, as well as other local and outside funding sources, such as grants from both state and federal agencies. An important part on this slide that is on the bottom there is, 85% of these bond proceeds must be spent on eligible projects within three years of the bond issuance, so that started in July. Some allowable uses under the EIFD law include roads and transit, parking and facilities, brownfield remediation, portable housing, other public facilities, and public safety And now I'd like to highlight some of the EIFD capital projects that are seeking reimbursement. Through the EIFD law, we are able to reimburse up to $5 million, and 300,000 of that is for administrative costs, and 4.7 of it can be administered to projects. These identified projects that are on the screen right now are projects that had either Measure G and Measure V funding, so those projects would, those funds would go back into those funding sources. Those funds both are very aligned to what the EIFD law has, with the EIFD structure was created under, and are versatile in providing city, other city projects with funding. So the funding that you see on the screen right now is what we're seeking back for the reimbursement. That goes back one year prior to that July 11th date. So it goes all the way back to July 11th, 2024. These are all funds that, these are all amounts that were incurred expenses by the city on these projects. Now for all the new capital projects and expenditures that we're going through. This list totals the total bonding amount that we're going after, and we're appropriating to every one of these projects. The projects that you see on the screen here include the return of funds to Measure G and Measure V, and also the one project to highlight, the Washington Neighborhood Park, another million, a little over a million dollars will be going back to Measure G. That is not expenditure yet by the city, so that would be another fund, that would be, that would be transferred back. And the top of the list, it has the reimbursement cost of $300,000, so total 54.7 million dollars that would be going towards projects. And these aren't the total amounts for projects, I want to make that very clear. These are adding funding to existing projects that we have in the workflow. Many of these projects are in design and construction phases, and a very important aspect for everyone here to highlight again is that three-year expenditure. So these projects have to be expended 85% by the three years, and that is why we came up with this strategy to pick the projects that are on the list. They will be in those phases by that timeline. And right here, to kind of capitalize and show the spread of the projects, there are seven transportation projects, and I Street Bridge is one of the main ones that composes of that 32 million. So you see that $32 million number, but $21 million of that, or $20 million of that is going to I Street Bridge project, so that is set aside for that. The facility projects include design for a new police station, some of the work that we're doing for the community center across the street here, and then parks and trails for the Washington Neighborhood Park. So with that, there's six facility projects, seven transportation projects, and three parks and trails projects. So to recap, on the agenda item tonight, we're going to be approving the amendments to the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 25-26, and appropriate the funds for eligible reimbursement. That is the conclusion of my presentation. Please ask, if there's any questions?
Thank you, Jay. Um, councilmembers, any questions? Sure, go ahead. Councilmember Early?
I just wanted to say I'm really appreciative to staff and how you all continue to find creative and innovative ways to fund the many projects that are needed in our city. I wanted to highlight on there that there are a couple of projects, particularly in my district, including Enterprise Crossing, as well as Jefferson further down, going towards Lockburg, that will be on here. And I think that this council has done an amazing job of responding to residents and constituents' need and want for investments in our streets, and so I just want to say how much I appreciate you guys.
All right. I do, yes, go ahead, Councilmember Roscoe.
I just wanted to quick come. Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I just also, I mean, this is related, is that, you know, West Sacramento being one of, on the forefront of EIFD policy and being that model for jurisdictions throughout the state, many don't know, or maybe they do, that our city manager was instrumental in making sure that that was something that we were doing in West Sacramento, and that way we are leading the way with this list of incredible projects, that we are able to cut ribbon after ribbon after ribbon because of our staff looking for opportunities to use these additional funds that would have otherwise not been available. So I just, I'm really inspired by the presentation, Jay, and thank you so much for bringing this before us. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, please.
Oh, no. I'm glad you provided an opportunity. So, um, so, Jay, thank you so much for this. I do have some comments in the end that I'll present about the project and taking a look at how we contracted out these projects, the bidding process and everything. I'll be referencing one finding, but for now, I just wanted to see if there were any public comments, you know, so I wanted to open up a public comment. Madam Clerk?
We have no request to speak on this item.
All right, closing public comment then, bringing it back to council. In reviewing, for example, one project that B&amp;M Builders had come in with the history of prevailing wage theft, and I didn't vote for that item in the past because of that history. I did support the tennis court, but did see that they did come back with a prevailing wage theft. Fine, because, you know, we, our staff did work collaboratively, from what I understand, but the Department of Labor, and as a result of Justin, who has been alerting us through a bid advisory, that we do work hard on taking a look at modifying our low bid process, because our lowest bidder process is, could be, could be a hangup if there's a big gap. The gap is, you're going to get a bidder who's going to come in and try to find a way to take it off the backs of those that are doing the work. And I think our values are to protect the workers who do the work here in the city, make sure that they get paid well, and to get, they get paid with the experience and the skills that they have to, you know, to do the work, and also to pay for the apprenticeship training requirements that they are required. And this is all by law a requirement. This is not something that the city is writing into a contract. This is by law why they're getting fined. And if we can put in a provision to not allow bad actors to come in and receive a contract, especially if it's recently happened here in our city in one of the projects that we awarded, I would like to see something to accomplish that and prevent that from happening again. And in taking a look at the other projects, I do know that construction costs are going up, and making sure that we have a buffer if we needed to increase the amount. How do we accommodate for that? How do we accommodate for that during the course of the process? We have three years to get the funds out the door, or I think that's what the process is, or awarded. Is there a timeframe where we can make sure that what we decided here is going to get taken care of and giving you that, you know, additional expense, you know, so, you know, as we saw the state streets, what's going on, that, you know, there is a 10% increase there during the course of that project itself, to make sure that, you know, we are adding, factoring that in?
Yes, so to answer the question on kind of like contingency and how we go about that, freeing up that money in Measure G and V does give us that extra ability to distribute that to projects that are on this list in the future if they did have any funding shortfalls. However, all those projects will be coming back to council when there's contracts awarded. So whether it's in a design phase, will be coming back to council when there's a construction contract awarded with those finer, more finite numbers. And pertains to labor, all of our current contracts, what we do is, we also internally audit them, but we do have a third party on all of our contracts, and we work very closely with the DIR. Unfortunately, there are contractors that do have those violations, but working closely with the DIR to cure those, they have the ability to cure them. So we do follow that process very closely. We do monitor that if anyone is actually debarred. That is a process that has to happen through the DIR. So unless they are debarred, we are not able to.
Reject.
Yeah, reject them, just based on that.
You know, I had a situation where I did not vote for it, but my colleagues thought that was bad, and probably called me out on it in various venues, including the press. I vote with my values. I vote to make sure that we are bringing in, you know, bidders that are going to be doing their part and taking care of the employees, and I'd like to see some change happen. I don't like, you know, somebody who is trying to make sure that they are voting for a contractor who's going to get the job done right, and you heard a resident complain about the quality, make sure that the quality of the project is done well. And that's where I'm, you know, wanting to make sure that, you know, I will continue to elevate this B&amp;M builders and all the bad work they did because it's factually correct, because I think we need to make sure that as a city, we bring in those that are, you know, if there's a way to exclude B&amp;M builders in the future, I'd like to be able to do that in whatever mechanism, whatever policy mechanism we can establish. I'm very interested in seeing what we can accomplish with that.
Okay, Jay, could I, I want to jump in here just to, we can get back to that topic in a second, but I wanted to highlight a couple of things on the funding allocations that we're proposing tonight that relate to your other question around, you know, when we go to bid out these projects, if we have higher costs than what you see here, what do we do? Couple notes on that. One, most of these projects have multiple funding sources, so there is, this is just the CIP portion that is EIFD-funded, so there is potentially other funding that can be brought to bear for most of these projects. Jay mentioned already that the sort of replacing Measure G funding frees up dollar for dollar those funds that could be brought forward for these. The other one, it's a major factor here, and I know I've covered it in some of our briefings, is the biggest ticket on here is the I Street Bridge replacement project. What we know right now is the number you're seeing on this, on this list is the approximate amount that we expected to have to come up with for our share of the project. However, that project's being bid out right now, there's financing costs, and a lot could change between now and when that project's ultimately awarded a contract by the city of Sacramento. So it's a possibility we may be back in the future, whether it's from a larger look at this entire list, or on a project-by-project basis as we bring contracts forward to make adjustments if we need more money for the I Street Bridge project, come up with our local share. And that'll be a decision the council will make when that time comes, but I just wanted to emphasize that this may not be the total and final list of the allocations project by project. It's our best guess today, but there could be changes down the road a little bit. I think on the topic that you raised, Mayor, that's probably a conversation we should continue to have, and we can ask our staff to explore, and our attorney to explore, what, if anything, can be done under the current set of laws that we deal with, to deal with the situation that you're referring to. But for tonight, I think it's important to kind of hear your point, but keep the focus on the task at hand, which is considering the amendments to the CIP.
And I understand, it's just that with these projects, when you come forward, they have a clock. And what happens is, you let us know that it's a grant, if we don't spend it, we lose it. In this case, it's EIFD, and we don't want to lose it. We want you to be able to bring to us quality bidders to make sure that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we have a hangup and reject somebody that has a history.
Absolutely, and experience and qualification is one of those that we have upped up and kept pretty high, a high standard of. So these projects are kept on a different radar from the city standpoint and from the contract standpoint as well, so.
Okay. In addition, I would like to see, and I didn't see here listed, are the Brighton-Broderick streets. They have been, you know, the roads are significantly deteriorating. I drive out there, you know, to attend events, and I am having to go 10 miles per hour just to make sure I don't hit some ditch, you know, take out my car. It's, they very much like the state streets were in the past, and I'd like to be able to see some investment in the future in the Brighton-Broderick community and the streets.
Yeah, so you won't see that type of project on this list when it's related to road maintenance. Road maintenance is not actually eligible under the EIFD law. However, with the passage of Measure O, there are new resources for road maintenance, and we have a schedule, we have the pavement management index that you're familiar with. So that's an update we can bring forward and show you when we expect to see some of the areas that you mentioned, in addition to others around town that need some attention, when we can expect to see those come forward. But we do have new funding resources for that purpose.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, may I ask a question? I just have one more. Sure. Thank you. On the new police station, I just want to say I definitely support the new police station recommendation here. It's much needed, so thank you so much for working with West Sac PD to pencil that in. Our police officers are, you know, sitting in closets, writing away their reports, doing their detective work, investigations, things like that. They're, you know, very much hard at work, but they're, you know, just sitting in very tight quarters. So thank you for putting that there, look forward to seeing with the outcome. Jay, that's a big project, so I look forward to seeing that project come to fruition. And with that, I'm done with my comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I was really happy to see Sacramento Avenue on there, but I do have some questions. I've seen District One, and I've seen District Two, sidewalks really bad in those areas. Aaron, that's been taken care of, but.
So, yeah, so the sidewalk program, we, as you know, we had a inventory that was done throughout the city that identified where sidewalk gaps are and aren't, and part of that process is now identifying as we do projects, whether it's Sacramento Avenue, which is a great example, has several gaps in it. How can we leverage the projects that we're already doing to account for those sidewalk gaps? There are other parts of town, though, that have gaps that aren't, you're not going to see a major CIP project that's going to take care of it. And I believe we do have funding, and maybe Jay or Ariana can chime in here, that was actually allocated, I think in Measure O as well, but we're looking at other funding sources to fund that sidewalk equity program, to be able to take care of segments that are not part of a larger CIP project, though. Anyone wants to add anything there?
Good evening, Ariana Dami, Assistant City Manager, Community Services. Yes, there is some work being done behind the scenes to both find alternative funding sources for the sidewalk gap, the steps program that Aaron mentioned, and also some work being done to develop a sidewalk ordinance that was something that was discussed at the strategic planning session earlier this year. So in combination of both of those, we are looking at different strategies of how we can tackle those gaps, both in-house potentially, and also creating capital projects to deal with them. So it's like a multifaceted approach.
Is there a timeline for that?
For which part?
For actual construction of these sidewalks.
So the steps will depend on when available funding is and how we can incorporate the different phases within capital projects. And the sidewalk ordinance is scheduled to come before you later this year.
Okay, thank you.
Comments or questions? Right, we're all done. All right, so we have the exciting task of being able to approve the enhanced infrastructure financing district budget for 2025-2026. I'll accept the motion to approve.
I moved.
Okay, Councilmember Akala moved, and Mayor Protem Sopizio-Hol said again. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sopizio-Hol?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. Thank you so much, everybody, for all your hard work. Exciting to get this done. Thank you. Next is item 12, workshop in consideration of the on-demand ride share program and Resolution 25-83 requesting authorization to execute and submit the fiscal year 2025-2026 Transportation Development Act claim to the Sacramento Area Council of Governments and the associated amendments to the fiscal year 2025-2026 operations and maintenance budget. And Stephanie Chan, who's our excellent staff person, I know you've been working really hard on this, so thank you so much for all your hard work, very knowledgeable and great expertise in this area. Look forward to hearing your presentation.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, my name is Stephanie Chan. I'm a senior transportation planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, overall, staff is recommending city council approve Resolution 2583 in relation to the TDA claim and the related budget adjustments for fiscal year 2526, and to authorize the city manager to, or does need to execute and submit the fiscal year 2526 TDA claim. Staff is also recommending city council receive staff's presentation and conduct a public workshop to receive public feedback on the on-demand ride share program and the proposed fare increases. Staff is recommending that city council approves an increase in the Via Pass fares from $14, $15 to $28. We provide discounted fares for eligible discounted riders, so we propose to continue that program, and that's why you see the 28 regular and 14 discounted. As you remember, the on-demand ride share program was launched into 2018. Since the program's inception in 2018, the city used Transportation Development Act funds to support the program. The city had prior year TDA reserves, which were expected to and have been used up in the fiscal year 2425 budget, so that just ended. As such, throughout '23 and '24, staff conducted various workshops with the TMI Commission and the city council on the future of the on-demand ride shares program funding and how to deal with this upcoming shortfall, and whether there were options to consider service parameter adjustments, such as changing hours of operation, adjusting the service area, looking at different fare options in order to manage the budget. In June of 2024, the council approved a new three-year initial term professional services contract to continue with our incumbent service provider, Nomad Transit, also known as Via, to provide us with this on-demand service. The city council also directed staff to continue the full operations of the program and approved a one-time $3.16 million bridge district fund infusion to help support the program. Even with the funding approved or into the budget, staff indicated that additional funding would be needed to support the program beginning in fiscal year 2627. As such, the on-demand program continued as a corner-to-corner service with the same hours of operation and fares as shown here. Another change that we implemented, or like a thing that we started piloting in the last fiscal year, was that we launched the West SAC Downtown Sacramento on-demand ride share pilot. Following a memorandum of understanding with SAC RT and Yolo TD, as well as a Clean Air Fund grant award from the Yolo Solano Air Quality Manage Mid District, the city launched a pilot in October 2024 that provided rides between West Sacramento to and from three downtown Sacramento zones. They were the Kaiser offices, the SAC Valley Station, and a corner at N and Ave Street that provided connections to a large, the larger SAC RT transit network. The Clean Air Funds originally subsidized the fares for these rides, which were actually pretty successful, and the funding was fully expended by December 2024. The city continued the pilot with regular fares. Over the past, since 2018, we've provided over a million rides to the service in fiscal year 2425. The service provided a total of 198,000 rides, completed rides, so we actually hit our millionth ride in the fiscal year 2425. And to provide some more detail on the on-demand ride share pilot into downtown Sacramento, here's a snapshot of the ridership completed in relation to the overall ridership. So in the red, you'll see the pilot rides that were completed, and the green are the intra-city rides only in West Sacramento. Overall, the pilot typically consisted of 10% to 13% of monthly completed rides. Ridership continued to remain stable after the free fare promotion ended in December. Following the pilot, like free fare promotion ending, the city released a survey to gather feedback and data. The results of that survey are included in your agenda packet as attachment four. Based on the ridership data, as well as the success of the pilot, the city worked to extend the MOU with SAC RT and Yolo TD. We plan to test changes to the pilot zone. We are planning to remove the SAC Valley Station pickup drop-off zone due to low ridership and confusion between the drivers on where to drop off riders, as well as its proximity to the Kaiser downtown zone. We're proposing a new fare structure specifically for rides that start or end in the downtown zones. That is a distance-based structure with a $4.50 base fare plus a $1 per mile charge with a maximum fare of $12. And we're proposing to eliminate downtown Sacramento rides from eligible Via Pass redemption. We plan to continue monitoring and testing pilot changes with Yolo TD and SAC RT staff through 2027. With the details of the ridership and the performance in fiscal year 2425, we ended up spending actually $108,000 less than expected. This table here shows originally our estimated costs at the beginning of fiscal year on the middle column, and to the right is the actual costs and funding that we utilized. So we saw a little bit of savings in fiscal year 2425. This was generally due to a discount given to us by prepayment, prepaying the Via funding upfront, as well as not fully utilizing all the vehicle hours that we were intending to utilize. So as previously mentioned, we are funding the on-demand ride share program with TDA funds and a one-time bridge district infusion. TDA funds are actually first used for SAICOG and Yolo TD expenses, and then the remaining funding is available for local use. So for fiscal year 2526, after the SAICOG and TDA expenses are claimed, we expect that there's about $1.23 million available for local use. And then in fiscal year 2425, like I mentioned, the city utilized about $335,000 in bridge district funds, leaving a balance of about $2.8 million for the on-demand program. So with this information for the estimated costs and funding for fiscal years 2526 and 2627, overall, by 2627, for that, for this contract, we're seeing a shortfall of $1.08 million. And then we don't have any identified funding currently. If the TDA fund allocation and expenses remain pretty constant, we anticipate that there is about a $2.4 million gap onwards each year. So currently, Via fares are three. So currently, VIA fares are thirty dollars and fifty cents for a single ride and uh fifteen dollars for a VIA pass. A VIA pass allows a rider to ride up to four rides a day for seven days. Um, eligible discounted riders receive fifty percent off fares, so um that's riders who are eligible for um their uh senior ride or for ADA purposes. And then um we utilize this fare and reinvest it into the program to support the program. And as you can see from the table to uh or the chart to your right, um, the we, the number of completed weekly bookings by fare type uh VIA pass accounts or rides actually um account for forty pers- five percent of our completed weekly rides. And so the city highly subsidizes the rideshare program. Um, this is kind of the estimated cost per ride through the past few fiscal years. In fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, um, when we think of the cost of operations divided by ridership, um, it's about sixteen dollars and eight cents per ride. City staff is proposing to increase, increase VIA pass from fifteen dollars to eight, twenty-eight dollars, um, keeping the same number of rides per day for seven days. Um, eligible discounted riders will continue to receive fifty percent off fares. We are not proposing a change to single uh rides. And um so as I mentioned, fare revenues are reinvested into the program. The current like um costs or the current cost of the fares, if you are to purchase a VIA pass or think about purchasing a VIA pass, you're likely to purchase it um after five rides, and if you take all the rides, it's like you're paying approximately fifty-four cents per ride or twenty-six cents if you're a discounted rider. Um, increasing it to twenty-eight dollars uh per VIA pass is more in line with it being a frequent like VIA rider program. It will, um, people will likely purchase a VIA pass after they take eight rides, and um if all twenty-eight rides are taken, um, they're kind of paying one dollar per ride. Um, currently, like I mentioned, VIA pass riders um are act- a significant portion of our uh weekly fares. Um, to put this in perspective of our contract and our budget, um, VIA pass riders account for only sixteen percent of our monthly rides, but they require forty-nine percent of our vehicle hours. Um, of the sixteen percent, two percent of our VIA pass users are considered power users, meaning they take more than fifty rides a month, and they account for twelve percent of our vehicle hours. Um, the VIA pass fare proposal will align the price with regional transit passes. Um, here is Yolo TD's um various uh monthly transit passes uh that ranges from eighty-four dollars to a hundred dollars. They also do a discount for senior and disabled riders. Um, at the bottom i- in comparison with um the VIA pass uh program, our current VIA pass is six, if you were to purchase consecutively for four weeks, our VIA pass is sixty dollars. And our, we are proposing to align it more with our regional transit partners and increase the cost. So if you were to purchase a VIA pass consecutively for four weeks, it's a hundred-and-twelve dollars. Again, you receive the discount if you are a eligible discounted rider. Similarly, this slide provides SAC RT's transit passes cost. Their monthly pass is a hundred dollars for the basic um adult fare. Um, again, they have some discounts depending on your eligibility. Um, other markets with VIA has als- have also increased their VIA pass. Arlington, Texas increased their VIA pass from fifteen dollars to twenty-five dollars in January twenty-twenty-one. They also added a new monthly VIA pass program uh for eighty dollars in September twenty-twenty-two. Um, Palo Alto increased their VIA pass from twenty dollars to forty dollars and um their monthly VIA pass from sixty-five dollars to a hundred-thirty dollars in December of twenty twenty-four. I'd like to note that these markets have different fare, basic fare structures in the city of West Sacramento, so the city um Arlington, Texas actually has a distance-based pricing fare structure. Um, they, the minimum is like three dollars. Um, if you go to the transit center, it's always a three-dollar flat. But otherwise, depending on how far you're riding, it could go up to five dollars. Um, in comparison, Palo Alto's regular fare is just like a flat fare of four dollars. We presented this information to the TMI Commission in July. Um, overall, the TMI Commission supported staff's recommendation on the VIA pass fare increase. Um, the commission also gave uh their feedback and reiterated their interest in exploiting, exploring further per service parameter changes to help manage the program. Again, those can be um re- uh changing the hours of operation, activating mode choice, so requiring people to take the bus if it's a um appropriate route, um, increasing or changing our fare structure or um, you know, changing our service area or things like that. Um, and then they were also um showed some interest in exploring other discounted fares um for uh discounted fares for additional eligibility criteria. This has kind of been brought up to city staff in the past. Uh, we reiterate that um it requires staff time and con- constant monitoring um to review eligibility criteria and affirm that um the eligibility, eligibility criteria remain consistent. So if you are a low income, um, that's something that can change over time and something that staff would have to constantly monitor, which adds into um kind of the operational cost of the program. There's also other general feedback on service reliability and the downtown Sacramento pilot. Um, I can get into that if you have any questions. Um, if city council approves staff recommendation as proposed, staff will um plan to implement the changes simultaneously between the VIA pass changes and the downtown Sacramento pilot changes as to not confuse riders. Um, if city council does not support the fare changes, um, there will be no VIA pass uh ch- fare changes made, and staff will continue uh with parameter testing to the downtown Sacramento pilot. Um, with that, um, I can end my presentation and turn it back to the council.
Thank you, Stephanie, bringing it back to council. Are there any questions for Stephanie? Yes, council, Mayor Protem Sopiezio Hall.
Thank you. Um, appreciate the presentation and all the work that's gone into this. I, I'm struggling with the significant increase to the VIA pass fare, practically doubling it. Um, was there any look at um other options that, you know, three-fifty a ride becoming four-fifty a ride? Um, that plus one, the extra dollar for the additional rider, that becoming two dollars? And what those numbers might look like and if there's, if there's any leeway there? Or if we phased in, uh, we didn't, we didn't jump by fifty percent, maybe we only did halfway? Like, what were the budget implications? Did anything else get looked at other than just doubling the VIA pass fare?
Um, yes, we did look at other options and we um there, we did consider a, a like change to the regular fare, and that can be something that um sit staff um can um move forward with if city council directs. Um, the main reason for the VIA pass is because forty-five percent of our weekly rides are um taken using VIA pass. If you increase the base fare, people are more likely to just purchase the VIA pass itself.
Cheaper.
It's cheaper. Um, like I mentioned in the previous slide, um, you've kind of only, to make it make sense, like at the current price. Um, if the current, if the current fare is three-fifty and the VIA pass fare is fifteen dollars, you would, if you're taking more than five rides a week, you're probably buying VIA pass. Um, and because of that, um, VIA, and like, um, as we mentioned, VIA passes accounting for a mu- a significant majority of our vehicle hours. The vehicle hours are how we are billed by the program. Um, so like, it's like about fifty-six dollars, fifty-seven dollars per vehicle hour on the road. And so um we felt that the VIA pass ridership needed to be managed in relation to the um base fare. Or in, instead of the base fare.
Um, can you go back to the slide with uh when you were comparing rates and you had a slide with um Yolo Transportation District? Yolo bus, yes. So our VIA pass monthly cost would go to a hundred-and-twelve dollars. And that's higher than three of their routes, if I'm reading that correctly?
That's correct. It's higher than their local intercity and their mu- like combined SAC RT and Yolo bus. Um, you have to think about this also as like VIA pass or VIA itself is a corner-to-corner service and um transit, you go to a bus stop, walk there.
What is it currently? So it would go to higher, but is it, is it currently lower? I just want to make sure I'm keeping up.
I'm sorry, can you clarify?
Yeah, I think you said it would go to a hundred-and-twelve.
Yes, so.
Oh, and currently it's sixty.
Mm-hmm. If you were to purchase it consecutively for four weeks as a compared to a monthly um transit pass.
Okay, so, so currently, we incentivize um folks to ride VIA rather than incentivizing them to ride Yolo bus?
That is correct.
Okay. I have, I have thoughts, but I want, I interrupted you, so I'm gonna. No, I just, I have a lot of questions about how, how. I understand what we're trying to do. Um, I think I'm coming from um VIA being such a needed service and just such a significant increase to the VIA pass holders, and I'm just, I'm trying to get to the space where I feel comfortable doubling the cost
Yes.
on residents who are relying on this to get places. Um, and I'm a verbal processor, so sometimes I've got to walk through this stuff.
Um, can I also add, I forgot to say this during the presentation, we are still continuing the discounted uh the a discounted fare for eligible discounted riders. In other markets, they don't do a discount for their VIA pass program. The VIA pass is the flat fare, left, with those fares I mentioned. So in Arlington, it's um twenty-five dollars for everyone. It doesn't matter if you're senior or disabled. Um, it's, and then the monthly one is eighty dollars. Um, same with Palo Alto, they don't do a discount for seniors or disabled or whoever they determine eligible.
Um, so one, we were sat in on our two-by-two with the school district earlier this week, and one of the conversations came up about student riders, and they are not currently at a reg- discounted rate, are they?
No.
Um, is that something we've ever considered?
Um, it is something that has, it can't, has been presented to uh city staff. I think there was a white paper in the past that also indicated that um it's also just significant, you know, oversight from, for a city to staff to um kind of manage it. And um, the, the school district also has their own bus service, um, the school bus services, so. Um, but if it is something directed by council, it is something we can uh move forward with.
Let's continue the conversation.
Mayor? Mayor Sopiezio.
Oh, yeah, no, we all. Councilmember Alco is before me. I, I, I don't, yes, I already cut.
Okay.
Sopiezio Hall off.
Real quick. All right, um, I was looking at the graphs that you did, and the majority of the riders seem to be seniors, and that concerns me a lot, not. The increase is considerable. They're unlimited income. Uh, they, I also looked at the other grid. Many of them use it to go home after shopping and of course, school kids. Um, I'm having some real trouble with that increase. It's just, it, it, it's hard and um I just can't imagine how they're gonna function. I mean, as, as it is, they're homebound a lot of times, and VIA has allowed them uh more accessibility, you know, to get out and and do the things they need to do. Um, I, I don't see seniors' income increasing in any way. If anything, it's been diminishing, so um does it have to be doubled? I mean, could, couldn't we do this in, in stages? I mean, I understand that, you know, the cost of, of VIA, but it's still an incredible amount for someone to navigate, especially when they're seniors. My mom just turned ninety, and you know, I, I realize when I am when other seniors are out there, I hear them often talking about how difficult it is to make ends meet. So um this supports something the bus service can't also. You said, you know, it's, it, it brings them a lot closer, and seniors have difficulty. Many of them use walkers, some of them use wheelchairs. Things are tough enough for them. So is there any way that can, we can consider maybe just incrementally doing this?
Um, we can consider that. It's at the discretion of the city council.
How, how much, how much discretion?
I believe we have, I will defer to our.
Yeah, I think the point is, I mean, this is all, you're, you're setting policy here, so this is completely within your purview, but what you're, what you're uh, I think, seeing tonight is to kind of reframe the discussion a little bit, uh, very simple terms. Uh, we have a, a funding shortfall that we're, we're staring down with VIA. Um, that technically is, is happening currently. We're, we're currently making it up with a creative way of funding uh through other sources. Once those sources aren't available to us, um, I believe you, you uh put a, a twenty-six, twenty-seven. That fiscal year will have about a million-dollar gap, but eventually it, once it normalizes to the next year, we're about two-point-four million um short to be able to provide the same level of service. So what we're, we're trying to do tonight is just kind of gauge the council's tolerance for, you know, we're giving you some options on, on adjusting fees that will help with fare revenue, that will reduce the uh, that fiscal impact on uh the gap that we're gonna have to come up with somehow if we're gonna continue to offer the same level of service at the same price.
Yes. Um, I would also reframe this at, like, as, again, if this is a policy discussion and the overarching program. Um, you know, we have brought um previous um options to council of parameter changes again, such as changing our hours of operations, changing our service area, changing um fares, whether it is your single ride or the VIA pass, um, activating mode choice. It could even become something as far as like, if you are an eligible rider, you can ride on VIA pass if, or VIA. If not, you cannot ride on VIA.
Okay.
Okay, I have some questions, and then my, my colleague, um, council member Roscoe has some too. Um, so, so a couple of things. I, I really appreciate uh this conversation, and I know over the years that I've been on this council um that you're absolutely right. We've talked about various options for VIA and um and I realize also in light of all the different things, right, the past couple of, of meetings that we've had on quite frankly, all of the services that we subsidize as a city, the reality is there's only so much money, and there's only gonna be so much money just moving forward, right? Um, Measure O is absolutely going to be able to support many of the things um that we need. I'm not suggesting Measure O for this. Um, uh, however, uh, that only is going to go so far as well, right? Um, it, and so when I think of, when I think of VIA, I was not here in the, at the dawn of time, like maybe, like my colleagues. Uh, but when I think of it in regards to transportation, I think of it as an augmentation to our public transportation um and our Yolo TD buses that we, again, already pay for through our taxes. Um, and not as supplanting um public transportation. And, and I think what we have done over the years, and, and again, I didn't realize, and if you could go back to the slide that has the, the passes and the cost, that we are um in essence, uh, no, go back to, yes, uh, keep going. The fares.
The Yolo TD.
Yep, there you go. Thank you so much. Um, that we are in essence incentivizing um residents to not take um YTD, right? To take the bus, um, because it is cheaper to go point-to-point uh with VIA than it is to ride our local public transportation. Um, and that's problematic for various reasons, right? It's problematic for um vehicle miles traveled and um the environment and, and, and that. And also, it's problematic from a perspective of our public um taxpayers, our residents are basically paying twice for public transportation. They're paying for VIA, they're also paying for Yolo Transportation, our Yolo buses as well. And so um not a conversation we're necessarily going to or an issue we're gonna solve in this moment, but I do think we um need to start to have some real um strategic thoughts and intentions and plans around how do we ensure, and again, you've, you guys have brought this to us over and over again, how do we ensure that those who can and should be riding um Yolo TD and our Yolo bus are, are able to ride Yolo bus? And then um in those cases, those who need to go point-to-point or some of those other things, that VIA is again augmenting our public transportation. We have more of a well-rounded holistic approach in West Sacramento to our transportation, in which we are scaling up and using all of the transportation options available. in which we are scaling up and using all of the transportation options available to our residents versus slowly and, and I think unintentionally undercutting our public transportation through our cost structure. And then again, transferring that cost and the supplementing of that to, to our residents. And so that's, that is my thoughts on this. What I would also say about raising the cost, I do understand that it's, that is going to be hard. I too would want some sort of phased in approach versus here's the cutoff and now it's, it's doubled. And so would love to see staff provide some options of how can we slowly get, work our way up to increasing costs? And then again, once again, looking at how both of our, our different public transportations could be working better together so that we are not spending more than we need to, because the pie is only so big. And if we are subsidizing every single service in every single way, and we are, are not efficient or thoughtful about that, then ultimately our, our residents are going to end up paying the cost, and we're not going to be able to continue to do that.
And for some context on Councilmember Early's point on how much we spend on a YOLO bus. If you look at TDA claim, which I, the TDA claim, which I believe is the attachment to on your agenda report. If you look at table or TDA dash three, it gives you the expenses for the fiscal year. For fiscal year 25, 26, the estimated expenses for YOLO bus that we're paying out of TDA is about approximately 3 million. So that's why you see the 3.2 million is the funding we give to YOLO TD and SECOC for YOLO bus and then SECOC for planning purposes.
Thank you for, I mean, for highlighting that, right? And so we're already putting in, right, a little over 3 million to our bus system. Councilmember Alcoa, this is what we talked about in regards to our routes. And so, and then think about this, right? The conversation that we had or the report out that I did our last meeting around YTD talking about, hey, you guys don't have the ridership needed, right? We're, we're thinking about cutting your routes because you don't have the ridership needed. And again, we're unintentionally doing that because we're undercutting that with having it be cheaper. And again, people are going to budget accordingly, right? I don't fault anyone. If it's cheaper to ride Via and it's more convenient and it's going to go directly to the place you want to go, of course, you're going to pay that. But then what's happening is we're continuing to pay 3 million and having less routes.
Councilmember Orozco.
Thank you. I mean, Councilmember Early really did cut into a few points that I wanted to make. And, and I think I'm the only one on this council who was here when we actually implemented this policy back in 2018 as a pilot. At the time, I don't know that we'd anticipated it was going to be so successful and that our community would embrace such a valuable asset. We had all these other transportation options we were launching at the time, whether it be bikes or scooters or other opportunities. This was the one that apparently stuck in West Sacramento and became a model around other places as well. But the program has taken on a different, it's now a different beast than it was in 2018. And while we were ready to, to launch the pilot for a certain amount of money, each time this, each time Via comes before the council, it's being augmented and augmented and augmented to the point where now I believe that the costs and expenses to operate the program are becoming to a point where it is, it's a very big budget item for our city. And these are, I, I didn't ask this question. Perhaps I should have led with it. If one, if a person was to do a door to door, such as Uber or Lyft to get around, what would be the comparison from Via to save, pay out of pocket for those types of rideshires?
Of course, depends with how far you're going. For example, the recent ones I have done some testing on because we were trying to figure out how to best set the pilot fares into downtown. You, from some areas of West Sac, it will cost $25 on Rideshare to go on Uber or Lyft. So we try to strategically calculate what would be a competitive cost, still under our cost of operations for the pilot rides. I haven't really looked too deeply on the Uber Lyft within the city.
I can give you an example. It would, from my house in Southport, around the Nugget Market, it would take me about $14 to get to Rileyville. Oh, Center Health Park, excuse me.
But under Via would be $3.05.
Okay. Okay. So that's a significant difference. Now, I'm not opposed to the fare increases in general terms, okay? I, I do echo some of my sentiments, and I appreciate the sentiment, some of my colleagues, that, you know, we want to definitely protect vulnerable communities from being tremendously impacted by these fare increases. And I understand there is a discounted rate. Perhaps, and I'm not as familiar whether or not we have specifics, we do, I think we do, right? Do we have a specific senior pass for Via? Okay, so we are specifically targeting those who might have difficulties paying for this service. But it's kind of like Learning Ladder, which ultimately became obsolete. That was, Learning Ladder was a city-supported, universal, it was under the idea of universal preschool. And we were offering this phenomenal program to residents of West Sacramento so that their children could get early childhood, high-quality early, early childhood education. It was a fantastic program that was modeled and revered region-wide, statewide, whatnot. Unfortunately, the costs exceeded our, our ability to pay for this. And, and it wasn't even, the low-income folks that I had imagined being able to benefit from this program were kind of, there, there were some, but it was a lot of other parents that could have paid three times the amount for daycare, but they were getting a wonderful value out of coming to Learning Ladder, okay? And with that stated, I want to make sure that we're protecting vulnerable communities, but also cognizant of the fact that without, without covering the operating costs of this program, we might not have a program down the road. And I, I, well, I don't know if phasing is the answer to it necessarily, because I mean, ultimately, costs are going up everywhere. We're all getting the squeeze. And I have low-income family members who, you know, probably wouldn't be able to afford the fare as it is right now. But with that stated, I think that there needs to be creative ways of protecting folks who, and that, that, that won't be able to afford or that might be incredibly price sensitive. But when it comes to, forgive me if I got this wrong, it just doesn't, I was looking at the, the increases in other jurisdictions. How are our increases in comparison to, there was a jurisdiction in Texas and maybe Palo Alto, was it more modest or was it greater?
So it's slightly higher than the increase in Texas, Arlington, but they increased theirs in 2021. And then when Palo Alto increased theirs, theirs is now $40 for a weekly pass.
Okay, so we would still, we would fall below the 40?
Yes, we're, we're, staff is proposing $28.
I mean, it's certainly a benefit, this, this program. And as, as Councilmember Early had mentioned, it, it was a, an augmentation to offer a unique service within West Sacramento to increase mobility within our population. It has been a wild success, but it also costs a lot of money. And gas prices aren't going, they've been rising over the years. And in order to provide this amenity to our community, we just need to be very conscientious of how it is that we're going to fund it. Because if we're wanting to spend $60 million on improving Bright Park, and we want all of these amenities throughout the city, we also have to think about how it is that we provide funding for them. You had mentioned the possibility of if somebody, and this is coming up on this conversation about being a holistic program and to support our public transportation, not replace our, our buses. You had mentioned if somebody calls a Via, but bus route would match that? That being a possibility of something that we could do?
Yes. So Via has the technology where currently it does show your, the transit lines. It is something that was previously presented to TMI Commission and Council. Essentially, it's anti-cannibalization of public transit. So if there is a public transit, public bus route that will take the rider where they need to go, and it is coming within the same amount of time, then it would not allow the rider to take the Via ride and require them to, like, they wouldn't be able to book the Via ride at all. And then they'll just, they'll be like shown the transit ride. Currently, it's just like a transit option is shown, but they can choose whether or not they want to take Via still. Yes. But it is a feature that we can enable if directed by council. When we had previously presented it, the TMI Commission wasn't very supportive of it because they felt that there should be rider choice in the mode they use. And I don't believe city council really commented on it beyond what they heard from TMI Commission.
Sure.
Just, just the last thing on this. As we're thinking about more of a holistic approach, right now, YOLO Transportation District is working on the Short Range Transit Plan for the county, including West Sacramento. This is, again, what you heard me touch on before. And so I do think there is an opportunity if, because when I thought about one of the things, right, that you just said in regards to, if there's a bus and it comes in the same amount of time and it's going to bring you, right, to the same place. And I think unfortunately, all of those and, and, and options, right? Because of the nature of Via, is naturally going to then lean towards Via being more efficient, getting you where you, right, want to go, taking less time potentially, that we should at least consider really looking into our short-range transit plan to figure out if there are ways, particularly using our Via data, that our buses could be better responsive to the needs of our community based on what the ridership we're seeing and the distances and where our folks are more traveled with Via to see if some of the routes could be adjusted to then compensate for allowing Via to do more of the augmentation. So that's my last comment. I know, Mayor, you had a couple of comments.
Thank you. So it seems like we are not ready to raise the rates at this time. I do want to remind council that we can continue to approve the resolution. One, but hold off on increasing the rates. And we can postpone that decision. We can break, break up the, the decision here. And I'm going to ask for the city manager at the appropriate time to, to help. I'm just going to, I'm just going to put that out there for now.
I think that, that's accurate. I think the priority for tonight is the TDA claim needs to be submitted to SECOC. There is a timeframe for that.
Okay.
The, the other part of this is the, the Via discussion was intended to offer you kind of a workshop. If you're ready to move forward, you can, but we can also take the feedback and, and come back with a separate item.
Thank you. And Stephanie, just a quick question. In the, in, in your communication with Via about this proposal, did they offer any alternatives to take a look at lowering the cost?
Of the contract or of?
Yes.
No.
Okay. So is there a way to go back and?
Renegotiate the cost of our contract. We're in a three-year contract. So, and there's a 3% escalation every fiscal year in line with like their estimated CPI increases. So this year, the vehicle out hourly rate is 3% higher than last fiscal year. And next fiscal year will be 3% higher.
Okay. Okay. You know, when I, since the beginning of time, as Councilmember Early referenced, 2018, I, I viewed Via as a competitor to YOLO County Transit and, and the bus. And that was an area that I had concerns with, seeing today that there, that the rates are an incentive to ride Via. Very effective. And seeing that we are at a point where it's going to be costing us more. But in taking a look at today, who the ridership is, who is benefiting from it? It is our most, our lowest socioeconomic residence here to get to and from work. To get, I think, taking a look at historically and working with you. The, the transportation modes are to get to work, for the elderly to get to either appointments or to get their groceries, to get to the community center. And speaking with Charlotte Dorsey, she said a lot of people use it there. So it maintains, you know, that group, the opportunity to not isolate, but also self-care and live independently. For our youth to get to school. So I believe that there was a good percentage of our youth who, who do ride Via. It's a safe mode of transportation. And taking a look at options for our youth, we want to maintain those options. I, I do see that council's a little wary about increasing the rate so significantly. And I'm, I, I feel the same way to take a look at, and not incrementally, maybe one-time rate increase. But I think having that data back as to the impact of that rate increase as well, seeing, you know, how, how much of an impact it is having on those that are riding with the new rate is very important since we haven't had that rate increase. I also am interested in the survey I saw on social media about the rate increase and the results of that survey. I did read some survey background information in the back of the report. But if there's any additional survey information on, we did receive some public comment saying they were not supportive of the rate increase. So, you know, I did reach out to some residents and some reached out to me personally who were not supportive of the significant rate increase. It's just a sticker shock. Yes, we contributed to the incentives, and here we are, having to figure out how to make ends meet. If we need to modify the program to shorten the hours, figure out other ways so we can cut back on costs. That might be another way to take a look at this.
Sure. Just to remind council, I think we did kind of present those options of cutting hours. Service hour or hours of operation changes did not actually significantly adjust the budget given that we kind of align how many vehicle hours through the day with the demand. So like if we're cutting our low service hours, those are kind of the hours where we're not getting many rides anyways. And I think like if we were to cut out like Sunday service, it's only going to save us like, like, I want to say like 100 or $200,000 for the whole year was not significant in the overall, like, annual budget of the program. In terms of some additional Via Pass data, again, we are, SASS recommending a Via Pass change, no change to the regular, regular single fare. And I do have a little bit more data on the Via Pass riders. So we have, there are a percentage of riders or, or number of riders who are taking like a significant number of Via Pass rides a month. As I previously mentioned, the Via Pass is currently, if you take like five rides, you kind of like pay the same cost in single fares. So like you'd probably buy a Via Pass. There, as, there is a significant portion of our rides that are taking, the more rides you take, like the cheaper each ride is, the less fare revenue is reinvested into the program. And there, like, so we have, based on like this kind of information of how many rides people are taking per month, Via did kind of an analysis of how much ridership might be impacted by the Via Pass fare change. And they estimated a decrease in 8% of ridership and a decrease in, in, in about 17% of Via Pass holders.
That's a significant decrease that would occur.
Well, yes. And the Via Pass holders are again, will probably shift to buying a single ride because that is.
I see. It'll be, it'll be cheaper to get that way.
Based on how many rides they're taking.
So is that, in taking a look at the rationale to raise the rate, it is to maybe move people to something that is more realistic on their travel habits?
It's primarily that our Via Pass, Via Pass is a significant component or of. or of our weekly and monthly ridership. It takes up a significant amount of our vehicle hours, AKA our contracted budget. We are still proposing to keep our base fare the same. People can still purchase a single fare at the same price. We're just asking to recover more in our weekly pass fares. The more rides they take, the less fare revenue comes back into our program because the via pass is set at $15. If we can raise it, then it can help recover more fare revenue in the program and also treats it more like a frequent rider program currently. Again, five rides a day throughout the whole week means like taking less than one ride a day each day for the week. And you're considered a frequent rider.
Okay. No, I get it. That makes sense. So, you know, at, at a certain point, you know, from doing presentations about via and who's actually using, you know, via, we, we in our city, about 22% are the disadvantaged community compared to 12% statewide. And those are the via users. They're the ones that are going and working in Walmart or other local centers here. So they're the ones that I, I don't know, like, they're going to be going, maybe they're going back and forth to pick up their children after school, you know, there's one parent and then going back to work again, doing another, or doing another job. They have to work two jobs. I, I don't know why this may be happening, but there is going to be an impact to that person's quality of life. And, and I do get a sense that you're able to obtain income history of, you know, or maybe it's just based on where pickup is located, that that's kind of like the background that you're gathering.
Um, our income data is mostly based on survey. So it's who chooses to respond to the survey. Of course, we do have like anonymized details of like where rides are picked up and dropped off. And you can consider that a proxy of ridership in disadvantaged areas versus other areas of our city and correlate that with your level of income. But we don't actually have any, the whole platform is anonymized. We don't have like true demographic data. We don't have true economic data. It's all from surveys.
I see. I, I would like to have more data to make some decisions moving forward. I do get your angle of the data. I get, it makes sense. But I could also take a look at scenarios as to why some people are using it more frequently than others. I jump in my car to go pick up my grandson, bring him back home, get back to work, jump in my car again to go take him to, you know, an after-school practice of some sort, get back in and, you know, it's just, as people have children or relatives or whatever, there are more than one, one trip to get out and about. So it's, it's hard to quantify what, what an individual and why they're in needing this pass. And increasing the cost is going to have an impact. And I'd like to understand a little more who, where, and if we have the data on, you know, what people's feedback was on increasing the rates, I'd like to have that data as well. Because I did see it out there in social media and I just wanted to have what that feedback was. You heard from council, you know, where we're at, I do feel like we want to make sure that, you know, I know this council really cares about the quality of life of our residents. And, you know, that's one of the reasons why via was established is to improve the quality of life of our residents. And seeing it come to fruition, it's coming at a cost. And, you know, I do, I do see some council members here who are very compassionate and care about the residents that we serve. And so we just want to make sure we're making the right decisions that doesn't impact their quality of life.
Um, just if, if I can attempt to kind of give a conclusion of what we heard tonight, what we could do next, if that would be helpful at this point. So we did hear a lot of feedback tonight from the council. It was very helpful. I think the benefit, one of the benefits of via is that we are able to access pretty good data unlike some other forms of, of public transportation. We can do our best to kind of give you more in terms of ridership data that kind of what the mayor was just speaking about. But also I think more importantly, some different options to how we might go about achieving the same goal. And just to be clear, the goal is to bring our, our fares more in line with what our costs are. We're not going to capture 100% or even close, obviously. But what you see right now is we have a problem just a couple of years away where we, we don't have a sustainable service. And we don't have an answer at this point in terms of how we're going to fund it on a sustainable basis. So while it has been wildly successful in terms of the usage, it's only as good as how long it can sustain it and, and where the money's going to come from. So the fares have to be part of the solution. We hear you tonight that what we're presenting may not be the, the perfect solution, but, but we will come back with some other options and, and additional data on some of the questions that were asked tonight. But I'll just emphasize, you know, as, as, as the manager understanding that this, this program is important to the city and it's important to the residents, the last thing we can do is status quo because we, we will not be able to afford it within three years. And so the feedback was helpful. So we can, we can come back with more information, more options. But I think the, the imperative is, is still in front of us.
All right. With that, I'll accept a motion for, I think, one and two. There's three and four. There, which motion, which, would you, I mean, we don't know where we're all at yet. So three and four is accepting the rates that staff recommended and one and two is the TDA.
So I will make a motion to accept staff recommendation for TDA. I just, I want to make sure that's for SAICOG, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That has to get done.
Not three and four.
I'm gonna, I'm making separate motions.
Okay.
Yeah, just, am I doing this right, Jeff?
Well, I was going to suggest, if you want to break it up, maybe if you just say I'd move the first recommended action.
First two.
Well, you, you said you wanted to break it up.
Three and four. Oh, first? We go one at a time?
One and two are linked together.
One and two are linked together. Okay.
Okay. Which one is around the TDA? I want to make sure.
One and two.
Okay. So then I'm, I'm wanting to move, move forward staff recommendation for one and two, for submitting for our TDA for SAICOG.
Second. Right. Madam clerk, council member early moved and mayor Protimse Pizio-Hol. On one and two.
Councilmember Okala. Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Protimse Pizio-Hol.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye.
And we hold off on three and four? Is that we're, we provided feedback?
Yes, well, we, we will take that as much like we do a workshop. We'll take that feedback, kind of circle back with, with staff and we'll be back with some other options.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. And you know, you're doing such great work, bringing it early, very thoughtful. You know what you're doing here. And I think I'm going to have to sit down with you and go over all of this. It's a lot. Everything you're doing. Right. Whew. Now we made it to the end of our agenda. Next, under general administration function, part two. We have reports from council assignments. Yes, we have some more call.
Quick. This last Sunday, the Yolo Solano Air Quality Management District, staff came out along with the director Gretchen Bennett, Holy Cross Church, and they distributed 250 air purifiers. It's really great. Those are really necessary, especially when we have smoke events, poor air quality days, and they take all the pathogens out. So it was really something important for a community to have. West Sacramento received them because the applicants had to have lived on quote tribal land or state designated disadvantaged communities. And the mayor mentioned West Sacramento definitely meets that criteria. Next Saturday, this coming Saturday, on the, what is it, 23rd, I believe, the 23rd? From 12 to 2:00 PM, they're going to have another distribution and this time at the Turner Library. That's it.
We've got, would you like me to report out on the, our two by two?
You can, yes, you can report on the two by two.
So on August 18th, we had the meeting of the city school two by two committee. We heard an update on the SRO MOU and the city and the school district here in the final stages of drafting that MOU, next stop, next steps, excuse me. It'll be coming to council in a workshop format for our feedback. That'll happen September, October. And then we, we chatted about Bright Park. We have, and this is a repeat for a lot of the stuff that we've, that city council already knows about. But LOI to purchase the property, the next step is the purchase sale agreement. We are working to pre-purchase a bunch of items to save money. Parks department's working to relocate the youth sports teams. And then the bid package is getting put together. And as we heard in our last city council, it could start as early as late this year. We had a lovely update on the home run internship program. Talk about widely successful programs. That one is one as well. We had 120 students apply for 60 available positions. Had a great conversation about what it would look like to expand the program and just appreciate the school district and their partnership for that. And let me mention this too. We also appreciate the school district for their partnership in Bright Park and the sale of that property because we wouldn't be to where we're at right now without their support. And then we did talk a little bit about via rate for students and we eventually bring that up to council workshop as well. My update.
Anybody else? All right, council calendar.
Hey, good evening. Just one update tonight on this Friday is the police department's new hire and promotional ceremony. That's going to be at the, in the Galleria downstairs and starts at 5:30.
The manager report?
Oh yeah, I have a few things tonight. So first off, Measure O, as you know, we have several road projects underway all around town. We have a lot of equipment that has been ordered and is on the way. We have many, many positions that have been filled or in the process of being filled. But back to that first part, the, the road projects that are underway, they really are kind of sprinkled throughout many parts of town. We are working so fast that we don't have our signs up yet, but I wanted to assure you that we will be producing signs and posting signs, letting residents and businesses know about their Measure O dollars at work. But if you see a road project going on in, in West Sacramento right now, it's very, very likely it's, it's funded at least in part by Measure O. So I at least wanted to tell you that. We'll continue to form the council in the newsletter on where and when those signs will be going up. We have new sign making equipment too that, that will be part of that. So that's been part of the, the holdup, but it's, it's in the works. Second, I wanted to highlight that tonight is actually Paul Hosley's last meeting with us. Very, very bittersweet moment. He is retiring at the end of this week, as you know. This is his last council meeting. Just want to recognize Paul for a lot of things. I mean, he, he really, in his, in his regular job, took the cities in the last 10 years, he's been in the city 10 years. Our, our social media platforms, our presence with the media, just the overall program that he's put together and built over the last 10 years, really took it to new heights, set new standards. There's a couple more special things for me though, that I, I think back on Paul's career, especially during the COVID era. All the, all the crazy things we were having to deal with as a city. His job took on a lot of new challenges and he met them head on and was a great resource and asset to us through a very difficult time there. Similarly, probably lesser known, Paul's actually been, we worked statewide over the years on fire incidents, helping CAL FIRE and other agencies manage disasters as a PIO. He had a really amazing career blending private sector and public sector. He was the news director at KGO in San Francisco before, a while before coming to the city, but in addition to his 10 years of the city. So just want to thank him for his service here. Recognize him. He'll be staying in Davis, so not going far, but enjoying his family, his, his grandkids, new grandkids, and hopefully playing lots of golf. So I just wanted to congratulate Paul and make sure we, we recognize him here at council. Last, September 17th is our, our next council meeting. Neither Amanda nor I will be in attendance for that, but we have very capable backups that you may be familiar with. So Ariana will be acting city manager for that meeting and Doug Drows, our deputy city manager, will be sitting in Amanda's seat. So please be nice to them and we will have a, a, a good agenda. So the show goes on and that, that meeting will be happening. So that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And.
Absolutely. I was going to say, I, I wanted to actually applaud. So congratulations, Paul. And of course, we would like to share a few words with you, council member at Yolo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah. Paul, I mean, gosh, this is, this is really hard because, you know, we, we've, over the last few years, recognized a few exit plans from several greats that have brought our city forward. I remember still back in 2016, meeting you and not knowing how to even talk on a microphone in front of people because it was a new endeavor. And to have you always behind the camera, to cheer on all of us, to be our best in order to represent our city with our hearts and our, and our minds and to, to bring our best foot forward. It's been wonderful to work with you. I, I look forward to seeing you and I'm glad to know that you won't be too far away. But I also just want to let you know that you have meant immense, you've had immense value in the city. And I'm so glad that you chose the city of West Sacramento as your home to do your incredible work. I know I speak on behalf of my colleagues when I say you will be incredibly missed. And I really hope that you come around with your iPhone, even if there's someone else really holding the official position. But yeah, please come and visit us because I know I speak for all of us when I say you'll be incredibly missed.
So I, I, this is bittersweet. I, congratulations on retiring because you're going to get to spend time with your family. But, but I too have been encouraged by you and supported by you to make sure we're getting in front of the camera and really sharing the story because that is very important, that, that folks know all the great work that this council is doing, that the staff is doing, that the city is, is really getting done on behalf of our citizens and our residents. And they know about that because of all the work that you do. And so I echo my, my colleagues' comments. And I think you, you won't be that far away. I hope you continue to come to our events because that's what you want to do when you're retired, right? Is continue to go to work events. But you will absolutely be missed. You'll come to mine. Thank you.
So I'm totally tearing up right now because my, every week on Tuesdays, I meet with city staff and I come into the third floor and I always peek my head around the corner to Paul's desk. And when he's not there, it's like, okay, I wonder where Paul is. And then when he's there, we get to catch up. And I'm going to peek, I'm going to continue to peek around that corner and you're not going to be there and I'm going to miss you. And I just echo what my colleagues say. You've been a phenomenal cheerleader for us and supporter. And just simple things, because we don't have staff until we go to events and we never get pictures of ourselves. And when you capture a great picture of one of us at an event that we're able to share with folks, it's just, you're thinking about us when you don't have to be thinking about us. And I just appreciate you so much and I'm going to miss you. And I look forward to you enjoying retirement and not coming to events. Unless you want to. So thank you for everything.
Paul, thank you again. And Ferna hit it right there about the pictures. They're fantastic. You tell a great story about the city of West Sacramento and the people here. And that's really going to be important. I have a good friend who's an historian and I was showing him some pictures that we've taken over the years. And he says, this is great. Says people are going to know what happened with the city and that's in large part because of you. Thank you.
First of all, I can't believe Karina at Yolo doesn't, didn't know what to do behind a mic. She's a natural.
Paul, you, you have always known how to bring the best out of all of us. From making sure you had the run of the show days in advance, you know, answering questions, setting up press conferences, always being in touch with the press. I think that is key, you know, for a city. And you, you accomplished that. You went above and beyond getting the communications out and also putting us in front. It was always, you know, very pleasant surprise to see whenever we did, you know, a groundbreaking or a ribbon cutting, press was present. And that's because you knew and had the best connection to make sure they were present and to make sure that all of what we are accomplishing here is highlighted, elevated. And as a result of you, I get to hear from a lot of people say, West Sacramento is doing great things. So that's because of your work in getting the, you know, through the media and getting the word.
getting the, you know, the, through the media, and getting the word out, um, but also helping us to, you know, um, be the face and, uh, giving us the ability to, you know, represent the city well, so you, you have done an incredible job to help each and every one of us, especially, you know, when during COVID, I know behind the scenes, I'm sure you were crunching behind your computer, trying to get that information, that was really hard for all of us, but being there during that time, um, I, I greatly appreciated your work, um, and the entire team, um, to make sure that everybody was safe, um, so thank you so much for all what you've accomplished, congratulations, um, and for your entire career in this dedicated role of, um, communications, it's huge for any local government or for any entity, it's pretty significant, so you leave behind a legacy, Paul, of excellence, so continue what you're doing, and that your family is proud and, and welcomes you with open arms as you retire, thank you so much, Paul. Thank you, Paul, one more time, thank you.
All right, um, city attorney report? I think your report. All right, staff direction from city council members, um, I guess this is, um, agenda item 14, we have a request, have a request to, um, provide a proclamation recognizing U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Retired Colonel Chad Caldwell for his distinguished service and significant contributions to the city of West Sacramento, thank you so much for putting it here, um, and we will coordinate in giving him a city council proclamation here in City Hall, I'll accept a motion if you're all okay with getting this done. Early moves.
Yeah, I'll second.
Um, Madam Clerk, Councilmember Early moved, Mayor Protem Sulpizio-Holm second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ocala?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Roscoe? Mayor Protem Sulpizio-Holm?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, any future agenda item requests by council, questions, anything? Nope, all right, we are adjourned.
I think these are all leaking.
Are they all leaking?
Yeah.